Good evening and welcome to the Milton Planning Board. This is our fifth meeting of fiscal year 2021. In accordance with the governor's orders, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, this meeting of the Milton Planning Board is to be remotely utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software. The login and call-in information are included on the agenda, and the meeting is being televised live via Milton Access. So, good evening. My name is April Anderson. I am the chair of the board. If the other members could please introduce themselves. Kathleen?
Kathleen O'Donnell, board member.
Denny? Oh, Denny, you're muted. Okay, go ahead, Denny.
Denny Swenson, secretary and member.
Great. Kim, you want to introduce yourself, please?
Hi, Tim Zerwinski, Director of Planning and Committee Development.
Allison?
Allison Quinn, Assistant Planner.
And is Julia on?
Yeah, I'm here.
You want to introduce yourself?
Julia Clark.
Okay, so we're going to call this meeting to order. We have a couple of administrative items before we get into the meat of our agenda. The first is our meeting dates. Our next meeting dates are October 29th and November 12th. We have some minutes to approve. Denny, are you prepared to do that?
Do you know what? I didn't get to see them. I'm so sorry. Can we save them? We only have one to do, so.
Well, that's the next meeting. We'll turn it over to Tim for a staff update, please.
So, a couple, a couple of things that we and the town have been working on. One thing that I don't think folks have noticed yet because it hasn't happened, but it will in the very near future. We've been working through the Commonwealth's Shared Streets and Spaces Program. This is a program that emerged out of the public health emergency to assist towns and cities in creating more space for folks to be outside and to get around. And it just basically offers money for technical assistance to do really kind of quick-hit projects to increase the amount of space for folks to be outside. And so, we actually won a grant for a pilot for a road diet on Brook Road. If anyone has ever been on Brook Road between Blue Hills Parkway and Central Ave, it's a big, wide street, and it also has a school, and it's got a park, and it is probably not the best place to be having a Speedway. And so, we've gotten a grant to do some tactical improvements with some paint and with some cones to create some protected bike lanes, some increased pedestrian space, and some additional parking near the park. That should be going in soon. I suspect that our diligent Department of Public Works staff has been a little bit busy this week, especially today, with some other, some other stuff. Hopefully, everyone who is here has power and is nice and safe. But those, those improvements should be coming in pretty soon, and they'll be through the end of the year. So hopefully, soon you can take a stroll or a nice ride down Brook Road and have a little, little elbow room. One thing, just to kind of put on the board's radar, the building commissioner and I were in a webinar this week about updating our floodplain overlay zoning. The floodplain overlay zoning is something that comes to us directly from FEMA and the Commonwealth. It kind of sets up zoning requirements for places that are subject to flooding according to the most updated FEMA flood maps. This is something that if we, if we don't do it, then our residents are not eligible for federal flood insurance. So, we try to be very diligent about getting that update done. And so, we've been working with FEMA and the Commonwealth to get that going, and so that's a preview of coming attractions for a upcoming town meeting. On the subject of the 40B applications that we have, we've got three applications in front of our zoning board of appeals. And this is, you know, for the board as kind of a business item. For the Blue Hills Parkway, Blue Hill Ave, and Canton Ave proposals, the board submitted comments at the project eligibility letter stage. We are now obviously in the sort of formal application phase. And so, I've been tasked by the select board to assemble comments for written testimony to the ZBA from town departments and boards. And so, I am, you know, we can talk about it now, we can talk about it later. But my, my question for the board is, do we want to simply reprise the comments that had been drafted for the project eligibility letter stage? Or do you want to give another look to the applications and draft some new comments? You can think about that, or we can talk about it right now.
Yeah, I'd like to make a recommendation. I think maybe you can just circulate to the board members what our letter, our prior letters were to the selectmen, and then if members have additional comments or feedback, they should get it to you between now and our next meeting. And if it warrants further discussion, we can do it at the next meeting.
Yeah, I think the only thing that I'd want to do is check the actual applications that were filed to see what the differences are between what we reviewed at the site eligibility stage. So, I'll take a look at that.
The applications are, so we can all, Tim can maybe send us a link or just tell us where they are.
They're all on the website, aren't they?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send you a link because it's a little funky. It's off of the Board of Appeals website. It goes to, directly to a OneDrive folder, but I'll distribute all of that.
That's where I figured it would be, okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll distribute that all just so everyone's got it. And so, we actually have, you, so you, you're probably aware that the East Milton 40B project got its site approval at the end of August. So, we're anticipating, you know, an application, you know, in the very near future. That's how these, these things go. We've also gotten two new project eligibility letter applications that have been submitted to Mass Housing, and Mass Housing has now requested comments.
Really?
Oh, yeah. No joke. Mass Housing has requested comments from the town, similar to the last process that we engaged in early in the year. So, these are at, you know, they're at 16 Amher Road and 936 Brushhill Road. I'll, again, I'll distribute those in the morning when I get into the office, but they're, they're up on the Select Board website. You can read, you can read those project eligibility letter applications. The 16 Amher Road proposal is for 16 units in four houses and 12 townhouses, and 936 Brushhill Road is for 20 units in two buildings. So, if you're familiar with those addresses, those are not enormous sites, but they are, you know, multifamily and, and single-family neighborhoods. So, to that effect, similar to the last process, I was not here for that last process, but I'm here now. I'll be collecting comments from the boards and commissions and town departments. And so, what we'd like to be able to do is have comments into me by October 21st so that we can get those to the Select Board, and the Select Board can, can start drafting a formal response to Mass Housing, which would be due by, I believe, November 9th. Those letters are also up on the Select Board for Mass Housing if you're interested. So, again, I will forward all of that information to, to you all in the morning, but again, all that information is up on the Select Board if you, if you just can't wait. And then, one quick administrative thing that Julia has asked me to discuss. I, I know that in the past, we've distributed information to the board via a Dropbox. Is everyone familiar with this? Have you used the Dropbox before? So, there's still a lot of stuff in there that you may want to be referring to, so we're not going to get rid of it or anything. But as has been the case for the last few meetings, we'll be using the Microsoft OneDrive, which hopefully has been working out for folks. It's kind of an automated thing. I share it through that program. It should send you an email. There should be a link. It's, it's the, it's the, it's the service that the town uses, and so we've got technical support for it if we need it, which is not the case for Dropbox. That's really the only reason I think they work similarly. But again, if there's ever any problem, you know, please let me know, and we'll make sure that we develop as, as good a process as we can. And, and that's it for the update.
Great, thank you, Tim. So, we have unusually high number of participants this evening, 55 participants in our call. So, what I will do now is open the Citizen Speak, and what I would ask of folks that wish to speak, and I see someone has already figured this out, is just use the raise hand function in Zoom, and we will call you one by one. So, Citizen Speak is for those who are with us this evening who would like to speak to something that is not on our agenda. So, it wouldn't be relative to 227 Pleasant Street, 333 Brushhill Road, the Walcott Woods Discussion, zoning articles, or the Housing Production Plan, any other items. You're welcome to raise your hand, and we will call you in order. And let me see here, I'm just scrolling up. I see we have Brian Fers has raised his hand. Brian, I will unmute you. And can go right ahead, just please say your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone. Brian Fers, 630 Brushhill Road, Precinct 10, Town Meeting Member and former member of this board. Nice to see several of you again. I am here this evening. I actually didn't know housing production was on the agenda tonight, but I'm not here to speak specifically about that. I'm here to speak about the fact that our town is currently under what I would consider to be an attack by a developer, the Tamposy family, who has now purchased four properties in our town and maybe more, and has, from what I just heard, just announced that they're planning 36 additional units in the Brushhill neighborhood, one of which is a density of 20 units per acre, actually more, because the 936 is a .92 acre property. I know that this board does not have specific discretion over the 40B process, but I know that it will be solicited for comments. And I am extraordinarily concerned that due to a lack of planning over the last decade, this town has put itself right in the crosshairs of a developer and perhaps other developers that will be taking advantage of our lack of preparation to put in extremely overly-sized and out-of-scale projects in our community. Specifically, I'm here to talk about 582 Brushhill Road, which is at the bottom of Voes Hill Road. That project is proposing, I believe, 119 units on around four acres in a structure that will be the largest building in our town in a residential community. The building is almost twice the size of 88 Wharf, to give you some perspective, based on a massing study that was done by one of the planning board members who's not on tonight. I'm not going to dwell on the specifics because there are a lot of people here, and I know you have business to do, but I think it is incumbent upon this board and the other boards in town to appreciate the incredible lack of appropriateness of this project. Again, the scale is wildly not in keeping with its surroundings. The building will be extremely high based on the large 30-foot-plus wall that we backed up to single-family homes. The project will likely cause significant traffic danger and vehicular danger. There will be significant pedestrian concerns. I don't know of any public transportation that accesses that site other than a shuttle bus, and the project is extremely historic in nature, not to mention the school impacts that will be brought to this town. Again, I know that there's not a significant amount of power that this board has to impact this project, but I do think it's incumbent upon this board to work as hard as it can with the Board of Selectmen and the Zoning Board of Appeals to do whatever it can to get this project to an appropriate scale. The fact that we're also hearing about 36 additional units in the Brushhill neighborhood on two one-acre properties is extremely disheartening tonight. I think it's very important that this town allow Michael Dennehy and Tim Zerwinski to do their jobs. These are two very smart people who were hired under a new town, a strong town manager or a structure. It is very important that they be allowed to lead the process of getting this town to compliance so that we can stop having this threat looming over us. The town has a housing production plan. Apparently, the board will be discussing it later tonight. That plan should be implemented to get us away from the threat of having these developers run wild across our beautiful town. I can only suggest that the town look to approving Randolph Avenue's 40B project, working with East Milton to create a friendly 40B, and candidly, working with the Tamposy family to work through the acquisition of these sites to de-scale them to an appropriate level, but continue to work towards getting to a 10% ratio, which we are a long way from. But if we chip away at it responsibly with the developers that are before us, we can certainly get one-year stays away from these threats and make important progress to workforce housing and affordable housing that our town needs. This is not me standing here saying I don't want affordable housing in my neighborhood. It's saying that I do not want a monolithic structure that is going to be incredibly out of key, out of scale with the rest of the neighborhood, to be thrown on a property that has incredible signor, significant historical merit and is part of what makes Milton special. So, that's all I have to say tonight. Again, I appreciate the board's, that the fact that your hands are tied, but the planning in this town has led to where we are today. And while many of you are not on this board, I hope you'll be part of the solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Steve Shapiro. Go right ahead, Mr. Shapiro, please say your name and address.
Thank you. Yes, Steve Shapiro, 184 Robbins Street. My house is pretty close to the proposed 582 Blue Hill development. Thank you, Brian. That was an eloquent way of framing the issue. I don't want to be repetitive to a lot of the points that Brian made. Because I think we, we've, a lot of the neighbors, neighbors have talked about this, and everyone wants to be part of the solution to getting to the 10% that Milton needs to get to for affordable housing. It's the scale. But it's not just the scale, it's also that earlier in my career, when I was a much younger man, I was in commercial real estate for Shawmatt Bank before it was acquired by Bank of America, and during a real estate recession, I worked with over 30 different large commercial developers. And I saw a lot of applications, and there was actually somewhat of a direct relationship between the way a developer files the first application and the efficacy of that developer. And so, I'm quite alarmed about the Tamposy company, and what I saw as the first application seemed somewhat disingenuous. It started to act like we have a nice pedestrian area there. I feel like I'm taking my life in my hands every time I cross Blue Hill to see my friends that are 100 feet away. I'm an avid biker. I bike all the time. I see near car accidents there all the time. I almost get hit a number of times as well. So, I saw the traffic study in their application. I saw their comments about its walking distance to certain services. One thing's for certain, for people that live where I live, we have to get in our car to do or get just about anything. That's a fact of life. So, to have a development of that size and be that disingenuous about its proximity to services, it's quite honestly, it set off an alarm for me, and I have some professional experience with that. Thank you for your time. I realize that this is not exactly all falling on the planning board, but I want you to appreciate the perspective of those of us who live nearby.
Very much. Thank you for your comments, and thank you, Brian. I would just encourage you to keep your eye on the Board of Appeals website and the Board of Selectmen agendas because they will also be taking these issues up, and the Board of Appeals will actually be considering these projects when they get to that stage. So, the Planning Board will continue to stay engaged, but I want to make sure you have the opportunity to speak with the Board of Appeals when the time is right as well.
This is Amy McGrath. I can't figure out how to raise my hand on the computer. I'm sorry.
That's okay, go right ahead.
I just wanted to, I'm at 178 Robbins Street. And in the beginning of the, the meeting, when you were talking about submitting comments to the ZBA, you know, on behalf of the Planning Board, is it, can residents submit written statements to the Planning Board of ways that, you know, things that we are thinking about this project to help you in writing that? Or is that something that you would not, you know, that you would not be accepting?
So, Tim, you should weigh in on this, but I think those comments should...
I could answer that question. The Zoning Board will open a hearing, just the way these are, and any member of the town, butters, all, any interested party can participate in those hearings before the ZBA. And that's, I think, it's better if butters and interested parties submit correspondence to the Zoning Board because that becomes part of the evidence that the Zoning Board would consider for its decision. And if the decision goes up for appeal, your letters and your testimony at the hearings before the ZBA becomes part of the record. Whereas if you send something to us, it's not going to be part of the record of the Zoning Board. And so, I would recommend that you would be paying attention to the ZBA's website for when those hearings are being held for those particular applications and submitting your comments and attending and doing stuff and writing to the ZBA to make it part of the record.
Yes. Absolutely, 100%. We will, you know, I personally will be doing all that. My question was more directed at, I personally, I mean, obviously, you know, you, everyone's going to have their own opinion, but I personally think that the Planning Board needs to take an extraordinarily strong position on this. And so, I want to make sure that that is established early and often, that we're not, you know, that the town is not going to be subjected to, you know, torture by these people.
Well, we already, we already did send a letter to the plan, from the Planning Board to the Board of Selectmen.
I do, I do know that, but what I, what I'm asking is that the board take a very hard look at the initial letter, work with, you know, I think there is a planner that has been hired to help the town on 40B matters, but to specifically look at other avenues, other things. Things have been changed. I don't believe that anything was mentioned about Conservation Commission. I may be wrong about that, but there is an order of conditions that's necessary for this project. There are stormwater issues, there's drain, there's all kinds of issues. And I just think that more, and I'm not saying that you didn't take time and attention to do this, I just think that this is such a significant project that if it is not addressed very strongly upfront, you know, it can take on a life of its own, and it's just going to go to litigation, and it, that's not going to be good for any of us.
What I would recommend, Ms. McGrath, you're certainly welcome to share comments. I would suggest that you send them to Tim Zerwinski, who's our planning director, and you can find his email address on the website. We will do. We will send this at the next meeting, so you may wish to dial in as well, but I assure you, we're paying close attention.
Thank you very much.
Of course, thank you. So, the next person who has her hand raised is Mary Jane Walker. And I have unmuted you, Ms. Walker. You kept unmute your, oh, no.
No, I do.
Go right ahead. Please say your name and address.
So, good evening, everyone. I'm not sure exactly what I even want to say here because all of my thoughts have really been shared, the concern overall about where the town stands. Certainly, the project at 582 is my focus at the moment. I'm a neighbor. I live at 35 Voes Hill Road. I feel like the, the impact is going to be so considerable, certainly in our neighborhood, but also town-wide. And I feel the need to just stand up and share my vigorous opposition, and I hope that in whatever ways that you can, you will share the same vigorous opposition. I think I'm hearing that, but I just feel the need to stand up and, you know, share certainly with other members of the town as well, because while the impact will be dramatic in our own neighborhood, the impact will be felt across the town, whether it's traffic on Brushhill Road, which may be diverted to all the side streets as people try to win their way around town, the school, the impact on the school and the overcrowding that is already a very significant impact for the schools. So, this is very personal to me and my neighborhood and my immediate community, but I feel like it's actually very personal to every resident of Milton. So, I feel an obligation to stand up here and make sure that I'm heard on that and to just respectfully ask for your vigorous opposition in whatever way that that means.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. And I don't see any more hands, hands raised. Just going to give you one more second if anybody wishes to speak during...
I'm sorry, Ms. Anderson, I can't figure out how to use the hand raise button either.
Okay, just say your name and address and go right ahead.
Sure, my name is Pat Mulligan. I live at, on Robbins Street, 236 Robbins Street, and I, I'll be brief. I can't really improve on what Brian and Steve and Mary Jane and Amy already said, but I would say this, that my family has owned this house in some form or fashion for over 50 years. And I will tell you that many years ago, my parents and an older brother of mine were nearly killed in a car accident at that very intersection of Robbins and Blue Hill. It was dangerous 50 years ago, and it's just gotten more and more so. With the addition of this, this thing that they're going to, that the Tamposy family wants to put in at 582 Brushhill, will just exponentially increase the traffic and the danger to the existing residents of Milton, including the myriad of children that live on Robbins Street, Hillsview, and Voes Hill, and all around this area. If there's a lot of young, and I'm not talking about 25-year-old children, I'm talking about toddlers and, you know, 10, 11, 12-year-old kids that are all over the place in bikes and whatnot. And they ought to feel safe in their own neighborhoods. And with this thing going in, whether it's the building of it with construction vehicles and whatnot, or eventually the additional 400 or 500 people that might be in this one building, I'm telling you, there will be something that will happen. And I don't say that to be, you know, so negative about, about this, but it's, you know, when you're talking about your family, that's, that's where your mind goes. So, like I said, Robbins, Voes Hill, Hillsview, they're already cut-throughs, and again, it'll just, it'll just get worse and worse. So, that's what I want to say about that. But I would also say, I hope the planning board realizes the historical significance of that particular address. The woman, Ellen Shitman, not only, she, she has a book written about her, he's the woman who designed the garden in the backyard. The house itself is a gorgeous place, which is a shame to do away with, but the garden itself was designed by this trailblazing female architect in an age when there were no female architects. And I just wonder if the Tamposy family has thought that through before they bring their wrecking ball to the place. And I hope that everyone in the town knows what we'd be losing in addition to all the other more practical, real-world concerns about safety and schooling and all the other things. That one particular thing is also a concern. So, I just felt I should weigh in on that and express, you know, I think everybody in the neighborhood's extreme concern and worry about this thing, which, again, we're existing members of the, of the citizens of the town, and we would hope that our concerns would be first and foremost over people who may be moving into this, in the, the Tamposy family's desires to build this. That's, that's all I want to say, Ms. Anderson. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks for joining us. And I just want to make sure that the, that, oh, there's a gentleman by the name of Steve.
Yeah, good evening.
Oh, Steve O'Donnell, hi, how are you?
Good, thanks. Steve O'Donnell, 65 Hillsview Road. I really hadn't planned on speaking tonight, but you all know I'm the Chair of the Historical Commission, so reflecting upon what Jamie just said, I won't go into the historical aspects tonight. But I agree with what Kathleen O'Donnell said about giving our comments to the Board of Appeals because they will go forward in, in, in any further activity. But on the other hand, I've worked fairly closely with the Planning Board over the last few years on developments at Walcott Woods, at Woodmere rather, and Walcott Woods, and sat through and... And sat through and shared with you many, 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 many hours and evenings of detail work to get those projects to the point where they will benefit the town, as well as the residents who will be living there in. And while I know the planning board doesn't have any direct impact on the Board of Appeals, I would hope that the planning board would take and involve as much detail in their analysis in comments to the zoning Board of Appeals as they did in those other projects. Because those other projects have turned out and appear to be turning out very, very nicely due to the work of the planning board.
Well, thank you. Um, so just for the, the public's knowledge, I mean, the board has talked about this project in great detail. We did write a very detailed comment letter, um, to the Board of Selectmen that was submitted to Mass House in its early stages of the approval. There was a site walk, um, that many members of the board participated in. So I want to make sure everybody knows, we have taken a position, we have advocated for the neighborhood, we have expressed our grave concerns with the application. We will continue to remain involved. We do not issue the permit or make the decision on these projects. That's why we are recommending that you participate in the zoning board appeals process, but we will certainly, um, take whatever comment that neighbors wish to submit. We are now going through the next round of comments, and as you heard us discuss earlier, we're going to review what our last letter said, um, what our comments were earlier in the process, what the application reflects for fact today, and revisit it at our next meeting. So you're all welcome to join us again. Feel free to submit comments to Tim Zarwinski if there's something that you would like to address. I believe our first comment letter is also online. Is that right, Tim? Is that on the Board of Selectmen's website, or where would people find it?
Um, I, I, I don't know if the, it, it may be on the planning board's site. I, I know that the, um, the, the, the town's comment letter, which synthesized a lot of the comments from both the planning board and some of the town departments is up there. I, I don't know for a fact if the planning board comment letter is, um, but I can, I can check on that.
Okay, and if anybody would like to see that, I'm sure we can share it with you. It's public information, um, if you can't find it online. So I don't see any other hands raised, and I don't see-
There's a couple of hands, April. Marjolyn Gase is, I think, the first one.
Marjolyn, please. You could say your name and address. I think you should be unmuted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, my name is Marjolyn Gase, 12 Meeting House Lane, directly the street behind the development. Not necessarily a direct abutter, but, uh, sharing the concern of everybody else in this meeting. I also happen to be an architect by profession, and I know how hard and an uphill battle is to stop this kind of project, especially when there has been a lack of, uh, call it a proactive effort from town, uh, as Brian said, to, um, make good on the, on the requirement, affordable units. I would like to say to everyone, and I think the planning board has also said this repeatedly, that we cannot mention traffic and/or burden in schools, uh, because they cannot be used as basis to stop this project. But I would like everyone, encourage everyone to say that, uh, not to say, but to direct their, um, attention more into the scale and how the detriment this project will be to the whole neighborhood. Starting from the height of the building, the number of units, but also like, you know, the direct impact to, especially the, the people on, I'm sorry, the residents of Meeting House Lane, you're going to have about at least 150 cars coming downhill there. And we really need to work with the developer, um, it's because I think that's what pretty much we can do, to see how we can make it better, how we can mitigate that effect, and make sure that they fit in the neighborhood and not, you know, just clutter it. And I'll be happy to attend any of the other meetings, but I do have a question for anybody who knows this information. I know that the town has engaged, um, a consultant that will help us through this project. So I would like to know more about what is that consultant doing? And, um, is there anything that we can do to help them do better at what they need to do to, um, to stop this?
So the consultant was engaged by the Board of Selectmen, um, to guide the town. I don't know the specific scope of work. Tim, I don't know if you have anything more to add, or Kathleen, if you have any insights.
Well, I mean, the, she's a consultant that's been doing, you know, planning consulting on 40Rs and 40Bs for, for some years. It's Judy Barrett. But we didn't have any participation in hiring her for this process. And so I don't really, as, as April said, we don't know what the scope of her employment is. Maybe that's something that you can find out, you know, maybe it's on the Select Board's website or something like that, but-
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I can chime in there. So this, this was, this was at a stage where, um, there were, there were multiple, um, applications for very large projects coming in at the same time. And so, um, Judy was brought in simply to, um, assist the Select Board in, um, in, in crafting that, those, um, uh, response letters to mass housing. So taking all of the town comments from any board, Conservation Commission, DPW, um, uh, all the different town departments, um, and synthesizing those and, and assisting the Select Board in, in crafting those comment letters. I will be, uh, assuming that role, um, for, for future, um, applications. And so, you know, I mean, to, to the points that were made earlier, if, if people have, um, you know, input, um, at this stage prior to, um, a ZBA hearing, um, you know, please email those comments to me. I'll make sure the planning board sees them, um, and, and can make those, you know, a part of, of, of their thinking on these projects. Was that, that was, that was the question, right? Was there another follow-up to that?
Well, I, I was asking, you know, you, you've answered my question, you know? I was asking, you know, whether we, there is anything else that we can do other than post comments.
Well, I mean, it's unfortunate that because we don't have 10% of our housing affordable, we are open for these kinds of projects, um, 40Bs. We don't have a lot of defense about it. If a big project gets proposed, we have a housing production plan, as, um, Tim has mentioned. We could show some progress, um, towards our 40B, um, counts. That sort of protects us, that provides some sort of a safe harbor. We will be talking later on, on in this meeting about zoning changes, um, and the condominium conversion, which we think if we had had a better condominium conversion bylaw in place, perhaps these houses could have been turned into something much more sensitive than has been proposed. But, you know, absent that, there's really not a lot of things that we can do. I mean, just as full disclosure, I was town council a couple minutes page for 13 years and went to 40B hearings all over the state. And I presently represent a couple of butters opposing a 40B project in another town. You know, so, yeah, I, you know, I've done this a lot. And so, um, you know, and I was hired by the town as a consultant the last time for Randolph Avenue for the Hendry's Plan, um, to help the Select Board and the zoning board work on those applications. I suspect that we'll be doing the same thing this time. Last time Cheryl Taggias attended all the hearings for Randolph, or almost all of them, and provided input for the planning board. I assume that that will happen again, that April will provide, you know, either in person or in writing, comments from us on the applications as they make their way through the hearing process at the ZBA. But there's really not, you know, stopping it is not something that we have a whole lot of ammunition to do.
Excuse me, this is Barbara Alavi from 131 Alfred Road. I have a lot of comments to make, if I can interrupt, please.
Barbara, I'm going to ask, um, we had two folks that had raised their hands ahead of you, so you can just take the third spot in line. I think, uh, Victoria Dozier was the next one.
Okay.
Hi, um, we're the Dozier's, John and Victoria. We, um, live on 179 Robbins Street, and we just purchased our home. We did a thorough search, um, all over Massachusetts. And one of the reasons why we purchased the home here specifically on this street was because of the safety, um, for our children. There was an, a lot, the historical value. We are big historical preservationists. And we've been involved with, um, in the past where you select, um, well, let me back up. We are big proponents of affordable, affordable housing. We understand the value with affordable housing in any town. However, there should be a planning committee that could find the appropriate location for affordable housing so that the people that live there, um, can have access to public transportation, the right schools, the right facilities, and also, um, not be inundated with a hu- a huge, um, development like they're proposing that, you know, it's like this development used the affordable housing to get into this location, not necessarily the development. And we're very upset and outraged, because this wasn't what we thought we were purchasing, buying, for a huge condominium. If we wanted that, we could have lived downtown, um, Boston. But if that, if, if Milton is going to allow any developer, just because they're using the, the screen of affordable housing to have a huge development, a, a, a project that's so out of the scale, it's just not fair and it's not right. It's not preserving the preservation of the town, the safety, the, the charm that we were looking for. Anything else?
And it's stripping the resources that are available, um, particularly as it relates to, uh, the, uh, accessibility to, um, uh, the streets and the services and, and, and then as others have intimated, it, it creates a, a real safety concern for us and our family.
So, um, whatever type of letter, anything that we can do, um, even our children, to, I think, kids being involved in this, um, and speaking to talk about the charm of the neighborhood, the safety. Um, I think it's important for all of us to have, um, input on this, and not just say that it's just affordable housing, and that's why. I think affordable housing is important, we just need it properly located in the town of Milton and for the citizens to really think about that, so that we can really say, okay, this is the location for affordable housing. We are close to the schools, close to grocery stores, close to public transportation. Those are all the things that people with affordable housing need, versus just plotting them there so that they're not successful. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much, Victoria. I, um, I just want to make one quick comment, and just to make sure that it's clear to everyone that the town of Milton is, uh, has very little ability and is certainly not the entity that's advancing these proposals. The developers that are coming in that we, you know, for instance, this project, but there's several other that are pending, and two new ones have popped up just recently, are using a state law called Mass General Law, Chapter 40B. And that law allows developers to override local zoning and really gives cities and towns very little recourse if you don't have 10% of your entire building stock, um, affordable. And we do not. I think we're at less than 5% in Milton. So it's something that the planning board has been very focused on. At our last town meeting, we made a couple of zoning changes. We were successful in making some zoning changes that require higher levels of affordability in areas, um, down in Adams Village, where there is access to transit and, um, walkability and a lot of the things that you were talking about. We are talking later today, um, about some other zoning changes that we're wishing to pursue. On our agenda is the, um, Housing Production Plan, which an earlier speaker had spoke about, that maps out how we get from 5% to 10%. And we are supposed to be talking about that, although I don't expect that we're going to get to that tonight, possibly at our next meeting. So I, I just want to assure all of the residents that it's something that the planning board is very much aware of. It's a concern that we've had, I've been on this board for five years, we've talked about it. We've attempted a number of different zoning changes to help increase that, um, percentage from 5% to the state law, that is 10%. We're going to continue working on it to the extent that you can help us, um, in the future as we propose new zoning changes, and perhaps, you know, folks that are on town meeting might consider supporting some of them. We would like to do exactly what you proposed, which is help create a path of least resistance to create affordability in places where it makes the most sense. Unfortunately, right now, our backs against the wall with, um, these 40B projects, and what we're trying to do is advocate for the neighbors to the extent feasible, and make sure that the zoning Board of Appeals, who ultimately makes this decision, um, has all of the information that they need. So I think when you talk about bringing in, um, folks to testify, I think getting folks to the zoning Board of Appeals meeting, when that does occur on this project, is really important. Again, we welcome you back to our meeting next week, where we expect we'll be talking about our next comment letter. And feel free to send, um, written comments to Tim Zarwinski, if anyone would like to do so after this meeting. I don't see, oh, Tim, do you see other-
So Dane had his hand up, he lowered it, I don't know if he wants to-
And we have, um-
And then Barbara wanted to speak.
Yep. April, April, this is Amy McGrath again, I'm sorry, I know, I really-
Amy, Amy, I'm going to, I'm going to ask that we let folks that haven't spoken yet, uh, get a chance to speak.
Yep.
So Dane, if you, if you wanted to unmute.
Hi, good evening, everyone, this is Dane Fletcher, I'm at, uh, 42 Vos Hill Road, around the corner from Brian and, uh, directly across from Mary Jane. And I've been living here 13 years, and, uh, you know, I have twin boys, uh, and love the community. And I've seen through development in surrounding towns, uh, areas, Boston metro areas, which abuts Milton, and growth in the town, just a lot more congestion and pastoral. I'm not going to reiterate a lot of things that other, um, concerned residents have said. But I want to echo those sentiments, uh, very, very strongly. And just also, you know, create awareness that there is growing awareness, which is probably the reason why the numbers are so big on this call. But one of the questions I've had, and I apologize if it was addressed. So in terms of slowing down the impact to this particular project, um, and lessening the scale, is the concept of, are there parcels of land or other, uh, areas of control the town has, that they can bring down into the negotiation channels, you know, in later aspects of this process? It may not be appropriate to answer that now, but I just kind of want to put that out there, as a potential, as a question, um, and something that, uh, I'm curious to know how the town is going to handle and how it can be handled.
So, um, Tim is working on, um, a project, looking at all town-owned land and trying to assess what properties are available or appropriate for development. Um, it's a conversation that this board has to have in the future. I don't know that that's a solution for this particular project. The 40B developer has put forward a project on a particular site. I know that there has been conversation between the developer and representatives of the town. It has not been with the planning board, because this is not really within our jurisdiction per se, but, um, with other leaders in the town where there has been discussion about opportunities to downsize or, um, protect the gardens, which I know everyone is very concerned about, thinking about all of these issues of impacts of the neighbors and the appropriateness of the scale and what have you. I do not know how that has gone, um, since we have received an application from the developer now to move to the next step. I'm assuming that those negotiations were not successful, and that they do wish to pursue the project. So I don't want to create a false sense of hope. I think what we should do is, you know, the, the town administrator and the Board of Selectmen can continue doing whatever it is that they're doing to try to talk with the development team. But at the same time, I think we all have to stay very focused on the application that we have before the, the zoning Board of Appeals, and make sure everybody's advocating for their interests. The zoning Board of Appeals, and Kathleen can correct me if I'm wrong, she sat on the zoning Board of Appeals. But they have the ability to approve or deny the application, as well as downsize the approval. That can be appealed, and sometimes it's upheld, the decision by the town is upheld, and sometimes it's overruled by the state. But, um, I would strongly suggest that everyone with an interest in this, just stay very focused on the application, point out the things that you've all discussed, stay engaged with the Board of Appeals, make sure all of your comments are on the record. And again, you're more than welcome to stay in touch. We're going to stay in touch with the zoning Board of Appeals too, but I think that we should focus on that. But I think that we should focus on that until we hear something else from, from the development team. I think they have every intent of pushing this forward.
Danny, you don't have to raise your hand. You can, you're the boss here. You can talk.
Oh, well, thank you. I just wanted to mention, one of the residents had said that traffic doesn't usually stop a 40B and, and that's been my experience and I think the other board members' experience as well, that everyone complains though this 40B would bring in traffic. So it kind of falls on deaf ears, but I, I do think that citizens should bring forward any, any issue of safety. I, I do think that, that boards and the state do, do care about, you know, specific area, you know, issues of safety. So you would want to document. If there have been accidents there, you'd want to research that. It's kind of not enough to sort of say, oh, this isn't safe here. You, you want to have, you know, quantifiable information to back that up. And also I would take a hard look at the sustainability principles. Years ago, we had a very aggressive developer called Milton Muse. And I think it was 276 units and it was really aggressive. And I told others this before, but we ended up finding blue spotted salamanders. So there was a real conservation issue there. But so you would look at the historic features or things that the state cares about. Conservation features, safety. So so there, if you could whittle down your comments to, to things that, that these boards can hear and do something with, and if you can somehow quantify it and back it up with, with data, that always helps boards feel like they're locking in on, on, on matters that are concrete and could hold up under appeal. So I, I just thought I'd pass that along if it's at all helpful.
Okay. Barbara, our next. You should be unmuted. So please say your name and address.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I'm here with my husband, Michael. We live at 131 Alfred Road. And I have a ton of, we have a ton of concerns. I've lived here for probably like 50 years of my life. So I came in kind of late, so I'm not sure. What I really want to know is who hired Judy Barrett? Is that, was she hired by the town to represent the?
She was hired by the Board of Selectmen when we had several applications pending that required a timely response. And from what I understand from Tim Zerwinski, who's our Planning Director and spoke to this maybe before you joined, he's going to be managing this process moving forward.
Okay. So are we able to view whatever documents she's presenting to tamposy? The developers as to the project or is that online?
So all of the materials are online. What Judy did, she prepared our, the town's response, not to the developer, but to mass housing.
Okay.
And those letters are on the website.
Okay. Okay. So my next question is, when was the last time mass housing reevaluated their 10% generic rule of jamming obnoxious projects like this in a small town like ours?
Just the subsidized housing inventory and it suggested I believe every 10 years. Is that right, Kathleen?
With the census.
Okay. So when was the last, when was last time?
Would have been 2010 and it will be readjusted this year after the 2020 census is.
Who's responsible for adjusting that consensus?
Yeah. Department of Housing and Community Development.
Okay. So do we as citizens have any right to have any type of comment? Or, or hire anyone to object to that 10%?
I don't know. I think you have to get in touch with the Department of Housing and Community Development to get that question answered.
April, I will, I will mention that several years ago, there was a ballot question in the Commonwealth to repeal Chapter 40B. And we still have it. So that lost, I even, I think, I believe the town of Milton actually voted in favor of keeping 40B. I can bring up those stats. This was within the past 10 years, this has happened. So, you know, there, there has been a sort of a reconsideration of 40B statewide. And, and the, the people voted to keep the status quo.
Yes. So Barbara, if I could ask if you could just refer your comments, that would be very helpful, but we have a robust agenda.
Sorry. No, but this is.
That's totally fine. I just, we, I just want to reiterate that we as a planning board aren't capable of rendering any decisions on this project. So we will continue to advocate for the neighborhood. We will be talking about this in our, our comment letter next meeting. But I just want to make sure, you know, please share your comments, but I, we do just need to, to move it on a little bit.
Right. Well, I'm very disturbed. You know, obviously all of us are, you know, COVID is obviously undermining our voices big time.
But, but Miss, let me, no, I just wanted to point out as, as April has mentioned, does, we don't hear this application. It doesn't come to us. It goes to the Zoning Board of Appeals. So we don't have any, we don't have any.
You don't have anything, then what do we have as citizens?
You have the ability to, when the zoning board opens its hearings, there'll be open hearings like these are. And you should all be there. You should all be participating. You should all be listening. It's the zoning board's place to hear the application, to hear testimony from everybody. It's important for you. I mean, I, we love the attention to the planning board, but we're not the ones who are hearing this, this application. It's the ZBA. And so that's really where all the heat should be going. And the discussion and the comments and everything else should be going before the ZBA when they open the hearings.
When the hearing's opening.
Those hearings have not been scheduled yet. As a result of the public health emergency, the governor has issued guidance to cities and towns regarding the conduct of public hearings. So our Board of Appeals has elected to, to not open these hearings yet.
But in the meantime, the developers are, are, you know, steamrolling and going along and doing their due diligence while the citizens are going to get, eventually we're going to get undermined. Okay? They have, listen, deep pockets speak. Okay? And unfortunately, COVID is completely undermining our citizens' right, our voting and our voices. And this is why they are moving ahead, full steam ahead. It's ridiculous. And you know what? You can't fit a square into a triangle. What they're proposing at 582 Buchalav is preposterous. It is completely out of scale. Okay? Even the academias that we have here, Curry College and Milton Academy, at least, yeah, they're big scale, but you know what? They fit the environment. They're not, they're not obnoxious. This is ridiculous. And you know what? I'm sorry, but I think I speak for everyone that's on the call right now, the citizens, that I do not feel any support from the town. I'm sorry. Zero. I think we're being steamrolled and these developers are, are, they're the deep pockets. They're the ones that are going to benefit. That's it.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Danny, did you have a comment?
Uh, yeah, I, I, I actually just wanted to thank Barbara Alavi and, and all the neighbors and Brian Fers and everyone who, who came out. I, I, I really do feel for you and I, I really, I, I want you to know that that this is awful. This is one of the most stressful years of my life, seeing all these 40Bs hitting our town like this. They're completely overly aggressive. I, I mean, they're very extreme. I, I feel like we're under siege. I, I, I hear you and I feel your pain and I agree with you. This is, this, the timing couldn't be worse. We're dealing with a pandemic. And, and I, I, I don't think it should be happening. I think it's unfair for that reason alone. I think when you have something very controversial, you should be able to have a public hearing process. So, so I just want you to know that, that I do hear you and I, I do feel your concerns. I think you're absolutely right. And this is, this is really, really hard. And I think, I, I think me and my colleagues here on the board, we're, we really, really want to help you steer this in the best possible direction it can go. We, we don't know if it's possible to, to stop them at this point, but we do appreciate you coming on, taking the time out of your night and showing up. And, and I want you to know, I've been on the other side of the table and I know what it feels like when you don't know who to talk to and what's okay to say to who and how. And, and, and it's a hard process, but I want you to know we're here. Please call me, call Tim Trawinski if there's, if there's anything I can do. I, I, I really want to help you. I was elected by the citizens and I care about all of you. So thank you for coming out tonight and, and please, you know, I, I send you strength and, and I think Kathleen is right. The ZBA for the, for the, for the projects that have been approved, please do follow up, consolidate your points, go to the ZBA. I talked to lawyers. I would, I talked to lawyers. I, anyway, so those are, those are my thoughts. Thank you. Thank you all for coming out tonight.
Ms. McGrath, did you have a follow-up comment? Oops, trying to unmute you. Sorry.
No, the, I mean, I think Denny steered it back to a little bit of the direction where I was hoping I was hearing with all due respect. I actually am a real estate lawyer myself and have done 40Bs. So Kathleen and I do understand what you're saying and I understand completely the limits of 40B. But there is a lot of room for a planning board to support the town here and to steer this, like Denny said, in a direction that is in the best interest of the town. So language like our backs are against the wall and this is going to happen and that kind of stuff is not, while I understand and I'm sure it's a very exhausting job to have this many 40Bs in front of you. But this is, like Brian said, would be twice the size of 88 Warf. Like this is like a crisis and I am not saying that, you know, there shouldn't be a project there at all. That is not how I feel. But it's, it's, this is, you know, it's like, it's just sticking, you know, there, I don't even know what the expression is, but we have to work and the town has to work and the elected officials have to work to get it to the best place possible and not to say, you know, our backs are against the wall here. And so I'm just emphasizing that and I'm not criticizing anyone. But the fact that the town has not planned in the way that they should have, in a way like other towns have, should not mean that the residents of this area are stuck with a monstrosity. It is just not fundamentally fair.
Yes.
I, I would encourage everyone to take a look at the comment letter that the Planning Board did provide for the site eligibility because everything that you've talked about, we did say that the project was well out of scale, too large for the site, no consideration for open space, no consideration for historic preservation. So maybe you'll be happy to see what our comments were and hopefully you will join us at the next meeting when we discuss this again. Any other comments for Citizens Speak? Okay, then we will move on. We are taking things out of order on this agenda. The first item is going to be Denny Swinson's presentation on tree preservation and recommendations for changes to our rules and regs and potentially zoning. So I will turn it over to Denny Swinson. And then actually before we do that, the next thing on the agenda will be the public hearing on 227 Pleasant Street. So anyone that is waiting for other things, they will come after those two items. Go ahead, Danny.
Well, thank you. I am, I'm a little bit, I feel bad having 50 people having to sit through this. I don't mind switching it to.
No, you should go ahead, Danny. You've been waiting several meetings for this or 12 months to discuss this and you've put a lot of work and we need to give it ample consideration.
All right. Well, so here we are. So as the board knows, especially after our 333 Brush Hill Road site walk last week, that we have had a lot of time spent at our planning board meetings over the last number of years spent on trying to figure out what to do after developers have damaged or removed trees unnecessarily and overly aggressively. And it's very, very difficult to manage a situation after the trees have been damaged or removed. So in an effort to get ahead of the problem and to set up guidelines and better rules of the road so that we can be proactive and, and ahead of it, we, I took a strong look at a variety of rules and regulations, adding tree language to the front end of the process. And I also took a look at one bylaw. If it's okay with the other members, I'd like to just go through it. Let's see. Okay, so Rules and Regulations, Section 5.4. This is section, I'm sorry, Section 5.0 Definitive Plan. Under 5.4 Statement of Development Effect. Tim, is it possible to show the items? Do you want me to put them up? Oh, there you are. Okay. We can scroll down to what's in yellow. I added some language. So someone suggested adding stone walls and retaining walls. And I'm happy to do that, add that language. So the idea here is to add trees to our thinking along with these other features in 5.4.11. In meeting with the Shade Tree Committee, they suggested a caliper of three or more inches as opposed to four. And that would be to be consistent with the Conservation Commission. So if, okay, so if, if my colleagues agree with me, I'll switch that to three. And so did, did any of, did Kathleen or April want to comment on any of this?
Oh, no, I think it's a good idea to add in the stone walls. I mean, that's, you know.
I think that's excellent because that's another way of defining.
That we end up working, looking at, lots of times have historic, you know, old stone walls with them. So, yeah.
Yeah. So do we need to add that language to this 5.4.1.1 now?
You know, I can add it now or later. I can just add it later. And then so that, that was, it, it seems as though the other members agreed with my language. So we could go to the next Rules and Regs. Do you want me to? We could go to 7.4. Okay. In this one, I think this might have been Cheryl's suggestion and what's in green, we could change Tree Warden to Shade Tree Advisory Committee. I think that's a good improvement.
Yep.
Let me see. And Kathleen had a suggestion. And I am okay with that. Trees are replaced instead of shall be replaced. So.
Just a grammar change.
Yep, just a grammar change. I, I think that's a good one. In fact, I already did it, which, so there you go.
And I like the yellow language about the, you know, putting in the post-construction about a bond because we had that discussion last time about some mystery stuff that's sitting in, you know, whatever. So, yeah.
Yeah. So exactly. So Tim will appreciate this. This way we won't be spending gobs and gobs of time at 10:30 at night in, in Planning Board meetings, talking about bonds and, and diminishing bonds and what do we have next and where's the check and on and on. Well, I do think we still have to do another round of thinking through enforcement issues, but, but we'll go for the low hanging fruit. We'll get there. Okay. So, all right. So then we can go to the next one.
Danny, I would, I, I would ask for the last, that, that last sentence, the Board shall acquire a compliance insofar as reasonably possible with the guidelines entitled New Tree Planting issued by the International Society with the guidelines entitled new tree planting issued by the International Society of Boriculture. I would add something about or similar guideline or similar, just in case.
Yes.
In case, in case they go belly up. Or we find a better kind of outfit, although I I I think I think those are good guidelines.
I think that's an excellent idea or 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 similar or I'll come up with something. Or or equivalent or something like that. I'll come up with something. I'll I'll ask Alex Whiteside, our wordsmith, who has been very helpful on this.
Danny, I have every confidence that you can figure it out yourself also, although I love Alex.
Thank you. Okay, well, thank you so much. Or equivalent guidelines. Okay. That's a great idea. Thank you, Tim. 7.4.6.3. Okay, so now we could go to the next one. Okay. Now, this one, Kathleen had a couple suggestions. Okay, so let's see. Oh, it should be Shade Tree Advisory Committee. And then there was just a typo in the old one. It, they they had plats and I think they meant plans, so we'll fix that while we're here. And then let's see what else. So 13, oh, so there was a comma, 13.3. If you could go back a little bit to 13.3. Okay. So there was a typo that Kathleen caught. I fixed it, stone walls. Should be two words and I took out the comma, so that's done. So 13.4 should be Select Board instead of Board of Selectmen. 13.4. Can you scroll down just a smidge? Okay, so Select Board has been fixed. Okay, now 13.7. Okay, okay, so Kathleen, I I think I fixed what you were concerned about.
It was Julie, just it was a grammar change. I mean, because there was sort of a repetition of a phrase and it just, it 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 just didn't line up the the way I thought it should have. So, yeah. Substantial change, it was just sort of a reading change.
Okay, okay, so does it make sense now or or do you have a further suggestion?
No, that looks good.
Okay, we'll keep that. Thank you. Thank you for that. Okay. All right, all right. So again, I I just went through this rule and regulation and I really just added trees where I could and and the care, proper care of trees during construction. All right. So, um, so I basically accepted everyone's changes. So there's only, I guess, the zoning bylaw. Section 4.
If I may interrupt you, I, um, I don't know if Kathleen has any comments. Everything that I've heard from her so far has been very favorable. I'm very favorable about this. I'm, it sounds like you need to make a few more edits. Is that right? Or do you want us to make a motion to approve these changes tonight?
We could make them as amended tonight.
With that, Kathleen?
Yeah, because I've already gone, I've gone through it and I just had, as I said, I just had a couple little grammar things and and typo corrections and I I thought it was great and.
Okay, so, Denny, do you want to make the motion and call out the the three different chapters of the Rules and Regs?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. Yes, I do. I'm so excited that I I know, this has been like three years, I think, I've been dreaming. Okay, all right, all right. I would like to move to approve the amendments to the Rules and Regulations of Section 5.0 Definitive Plan. Section 7.0 Required Improvements. Section 13 Scenic Roads as amended.
Hey, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Sorry, I just thought of this. Can can we hold off on the scenic roads one? I know scenic roads is is a sort of, there's a state statute that governs scenic roads.
Okay.
I I would just want, I I I didn't do this because it wasn't zoning, so I didn't, but I I should have, I should have run this by town council first. And I literally just thought of it. I'm, I I don't think it should be a problem. I think it's all kind of in the spirit, but just because I've I've been dealing with the state statute a little bit and I'm trying to be.
Couldn't we just amend our motion to say that we are approving it subject to town council's approval?
That is a very valid and appropriate thing. So.
Denny, do you accept that? Do you accept?
Yes. Yes, I do. Of course I do.
You resecond. Okay, then let's do a roll call vote. Denny Swenson?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Earl Anderson, yes. Congratulations, Denny.
Thank you very much.
It was worth the wait.
Yes, it was.
Now you can.
Congratulations.
Yeah, that was great. And it's going to help everyone, us applicants, neighborhoods, because there's just going to be a lot more transparency moving forward on our expectations. So I think that's excellent. Thank you for all of your hard work.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you to the rest of the board for all of their good feedback and I I think it improved it greatly. So thank you so much.
Good. Now let's go move on to your zoning article.
Okay, so this article, and I want to also thank Alex Whiteside because I he was really incredibly helpful on on all of this. So, um, so again, we looked at the earth materials removal and deposit of fill because this is where we see damage to trees at this stage of development. And we wanted to add this language in. I did reach out to the Zoning Board of Appeals Chair. He agreed that that having this language in there will be very helpful for his board as well. Because without having trees in the language, that we kind of were at a disadvantage when we were meeting with developers and and these issues kept coming up. So, as you can see, in number one, we added the word trees. So if we could keep scrolling, Tim. All right, and then I we added a bullet point so that the existing tree scape in the area for proposed removal of earth material and the tree scape proposed after removal. So here I would suggest that we change it to three or more to be consistent with the Conservation Commission as well.
Yep.
I don't know if you can do that, Tim. Or I can, I can do it in the in the one online holder. So it'd be three, three caliber, three or more inches to be consistent. Good. Okay, and then in addition, I added trees to number three. And then the existing tree scape. So this is just the plans. This was something that Cheryl always asks for us, but goodness, if if we're not on the board anymore, what are we going to do? We need somebody to ask these questions. What's the existing tree scape? This is our legacy, everyone. We we will always be able to ask for this of the developers upfront. So and and again, I want to change it from four to three. Okay, so, um, okay, so then I think we should add retaining walls as Cheryl suggested and I and I did, I I I made Cheryl's suggested change there. In other words, the change of grade also includes any anytime you change the grade enough to need a retaining wall.
That makes sense.
And then there was really a a typographical error that we wanted to fix. We wanted to add Section 4A because the A was missing. So we're just fixing something while we're in here. Okay, so I think this one would need the approval of three members of our board and then we would have a public hearing. And then it would go on to the Warrant Committee and the Select Board and so forth. And then on to town meeting to get approved through that.
So.
Tim has shared this with some departments and he can provide some feedback. So I think we might have a little bit more work to do on this, on this one, but I did, Melinda Collins, who's Chair of the Board of Select, the Select Board today, and they are planning for a January slash February town meeting. And she asked if there would be any zoning articles and I said on behalf of the board that I expect that we will have a tree bylaw revision for her and possibly one or two other things. So I think it's my intent that we move this along so that we can get it on the next town meeting warrant, if that works for you.
That's great.
Okay.
So.
Provide some feedback?
To to that effect, I I I did run this by the Building Commissioner, who at the end of the day is responsible for enforcement of of most of the zoning bylaw. Happy with the the tree changes. I think he thinks it's appropriate, especially given the attention and and priority that the Planning Board has shown for this issue. He has some other issues with this bylaw. And I think would relish the opportunity to engage with the Planning Board on some other amendments to to make it work a little bit better for his operation. There's also some resident interests in earth materials removal and deposit of fill that I think would be good to engage with. So to to that effect, I I I think it might be appropriate, Denny, if we form a little and maybe Cheryl can be involved as well because she has some some interest in this as well, maybe form a little bit of a working group to come up with some amendments that we can bring back to the board. You know, for a more comprehensive look at at this section of the bylaw.
But wouldn't we do that in the public hearing?
So.
It's just a question. I don't, I mean, I.
Yeah, I I so there would obviously be, but I mean, in in the sense that, you know, rather than vote to sort of approve this language or 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 vote to bring this language to a public hearing, there may be additional amendments that we would want to present in in a sort of wholesale fashion. So, you know, you know, given that we're not doing this for December, we're doing it for for the future. I think we have a couple of weeks to put together a more comprehensive look at this section.
I'd be happy to to have another go around with with some more participants. Thank you, Tim.
Okay, so I will, I'll work on that.
But I just wanted to thank Kathleen for for trying to move it forward because I, she's always good at that.
I wanted you to know, Denny, that I think that the comments are unrelated to trees. So it's not, it's not in any way that Joe Prandt doesn't agree with what you've put forward. I think he's seeing this as an opportunity to resolve some of the fill issues that we talk about on every project. Cheryl is concerned with and that will probably impact trees. So if you guys can meet outside of this meeting and then come back with a more comprehensive rewrite with Joe's comments, I think it would just be the next best step for us. And then we can vote to put this on the next warrant and go through the hearing process and perhaps make a different, further adjustments once we get public comment. But getting that fill issue resolved seems like an opportunity for us as well.
Great, I agree.
Good. Okay, so what do we have next? Thank you, Denny. That was, that was really good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathleen, do you want to talk about condo?
Yes.
Okay.
So, as you know, we had a have a condominium conversion bylaw on the books, which requires more than five acres of land. It is my contention that two of the 40Bs that we are looking at, unfortunately, get done because the acreage was less than five. And so there weren't any other opportunities to transform the two buildings that were presently on Canton Ave and on Brush Hill Road into condominium projects because the acreage requirement, they're less than, both those parcels are less than five acres. So I took a look at what we already had on the books and actually reorganized it in in a different way, but it basically has most of the information that was already in our bylaw. But the major change is in the types of properties that would be eligible for this condominium conversion. And it does not have a requirement for any particular acreage. So if you go back to the beginning, Tim, in the beginning of the start, it's sort of, as I said, we talk about the districts where you can do this. It has to have, obviously, frontage on a public way, et cetera, et cetera. Buildings that contain no less than 30,000, 3,000 square feet of floor area. It has to have been built prior to 1970. As I said, the idea behind this condominium conversion statute is that it's a way to save older homes that probably don't need a third floor for servants anymore. And that we could save the housing that stock that makes Milton so special by providing an opportunity to convert those functionally, you know, functionally inefficient buildings into more sensitive condominium developments. And so it talks about the kinds of sites obviously coming before us for the for the hearing, depending upon, you know, how the project is organized. We could allow for larger parcels. We could allow more dwelling units if we wanted to. I said, like to provide us with flexibility. We want to include the fact that they have to show that they're going to be using, you know, lead standards, environmentally sensitive areas are protected. All of those kinds of things have to be shown. So we also are looking to make sure that we get comments from the Conservation Commission, the Historic Commission, the Affordable Housing Trust and anything else that would be helpful when we were dealing with these kinds of projects. And what then I did is that what we had in the bylaw to begin with was information about what should be in the application. And I just organized it in a way so that there's a section that says the application shall have these items. And so I thought it made it a little easier to read and figure out what you were supposed to turn in when you have it organized in this fashion. But a lot of the language was already in our bylaw. I said, I just sort of reorganized it. So what we want to make sure is that we, you know, we see that it's, you know, an independent dwelling unit that that you are preserving the existing house. You're providing, you know, necessary parking. We would see the condo documents, landscape plan, unit plans, you know, all that sort of thing. And then, you know, you aren't allowed to build a new building or a structure unless it's sort of, you know, sensitive to the existing building. And that's what an F is talking about. So you can't just, you know, jam a bunch of things in there. It's got to be sensitive to the site, sensitive to the landscaping that's already in existence and sensitive to the existing neighborhood. So you don't get something like we have on that the neighbors, as you've said, have complained about some humongo 30, you know, 300 unit building poking up to the sky next to a historic structure. So the idea is it's going to fit in to the context of the neighborhood, context of the surrounding housing. And that would be something that the Planning Board would be looking at as it goes through the hearing process on these special permits. So that's sort of a brief outline, because I know it's, we're running out of time, about what I did with this article.
Denny, do you have any questions for Kathleen?
I'm, I could, I didn't have a chance to read it, so I I apologize for that. I want to give a good thorough read. Could you, could you help me imagine? So if we had a five acre property, do you have a sense of how many condos we would be looking at? Or would it be, could you kind of help me picture it?
Well, actually Cheryl sent sent along sort of a con of something that would sort of contrast what is proposed with Canton Ave.
Oh, great.
Where that. Where that you would do under this, under this by law. I don't know that, maybe she didn't share that, but so, so the idea would, if you look at, remember, we did the sidewalk at Canton Ave. So you have that the eighteen ninety house with a carriage house and then there's sort of an extension off the back, the tennis courts, that sort of thing. The idea would probably be that you would make two units, let's say, in the existing home, maybe another unit in the carriage house and then probably build, you know, two or three townhouses off the back. So you'd be, instead of looking at, you know, one hundred and sixty units, you'd be looking more at like ten.
Okay.
And if you think about what this has been used before, this condo by law was used, I think, for the borough estates out near you. So, so that, but that was more than five acres. So we're really trying to, I'm trying to think of these houses that certainly in my neighborhood that, let's say, for example, have a big old Victorian with the big old carriage house in the back or something like that, where you might want to be able to do something that's more more, you know, more efficient, more functionally suitable. So I think, you know, I said, I think Cheryl's drawing for Canton was maybe ten.
So those numbers are much, much better than the last condominium by law, as I recall it, a number of years ago, which was very controversial. So I am very interested to walk through this even closer. So thank you.
Yes, I mean, as I said, take a look, you know, it's a draft and, you know, I, but I think, as I said, I tried to organize it in a way that made it sort of clearer about what we were looking for. So, you know, the application has to have X, Y and Z and, and, and I really was concerned about the fact about we required five acres. And, and we have these two projects, forty Bs that are on a site that would be much more sensitively developed if they could have used this condo conversion by law, in my opinion.
And I think, you know, that to the point that we discussed in the Blue Hill Parkway forty B, when you have existing underlying zoning that does provide for some housing production, it does help with the argument to mass housing, why we shouldn't be approving just, you know, wholesale these gigantic forty B projects when there are other alternatives available other than just single family homes for multifamily housing. So I think, you know, beefing up this condo conversion by law on smaller sites as well would be terrific. Because I think it would help us in our defense if other forty Bs continue to pop up.
And for me, it was really a way to sort of think about saving housing stock that would otherwise be torn down. And, you know, that's the thing that makes Milton so attractive to all of us who didn't grow up here but moved here later, is that, you know, the housing is lovely.
Right.
And so I worked in other towns on the North Shore where we've had the same situation with these sort of older Victorians that, you know, are functionally obsolete, you know, and need to be sort of adapted. And so this is a sort of a way to make those houses stay and look the same from the outside, but be occupied by, you know, two families or three families instead of just the one.
Right. So what I suggest is maybe sort of to Denny's point is it would be helpful to kind of run a test using this by law on like a maximum build out of sites in different parts of town. Would you be okay with that, Kathleen? Maybe Tim can run, maybe Tim can run a test or Cheryl or somebody. And we can talk about it.
Yeah, I don't know how to do that.
I don't either.
Yeah.
We could use it as a platform to kind of help us all kind of.
Yeah, and I'm happy to work on something like that. I think Cheryl's kind of technical expertise would be helpful as well. But I think especially if we want this to be, you know, truly a townwide option, you know, we need to look in the C zone, we need to look in the B zone, we need to kind of, I hate to use the term worst case scenario because I don't think adding more housing to our town is bad. But we do need to sort of try to identify some of those, you know, maybe perhaps unintended, you know, consequences. Because I think the, the purpose and the intent behind this is just, you know, dynamite. But, you know, obviously, we don't want to, we don't want to find ourselves in a situation where all of a sudden we've got a kind of forty B light and we're dealing with the same headaches, you know, and not, you know, despite our best intentions. So I think, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll work on that. I'll probably enlist Cheryl's help. And we'll, we'll, we'll keep everyone posted. I'll try to get that done in a timely way.
Yeah, that's great. And if we could advance this in time for the January, February town meeting, I think that would be great too.
Yeah, I really want, I think we need to do this and I'll, you know, now that I've sort of launched it off, I'll work on the next one, which is the accessory units.
Great. Yeah, that would be terrific. Okay, so we have one more under the heading of discussion. Twenty-one zoning articles. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to add one thing to the condo conversion by law discussion and that was something that Kathleen had mentioned and Allison has spent some good deal in, in describing to me that the historic preservation guidelines, possibly a by law or something along those lines. Because a lot of these larger estates, like these five acre estates, as Kathleen mentioned, have a historic structure on there or something of beauty. And I liked her language of working with that look. And then historic, I'm, I'm, I'm forgetting the word. Zones almost, historic.
Oh, historic districts.
Districts with some requirements that, that might be helpful in making this by law work if they, if those two things could be compatible. But it's just a thought.
Yeah, I mean, we talked, we talked about that when we did the Milton Village, but the problem is that, you know, to do a historic district, well, that's not us, that would be the Historic Commission. And secondly, you have to have the, you know, the property owners participate. That doesn't always happen.
Okay, all right.
But that's really something, the Historic Commission, I know Steve O'Donnell has mentioned a number of times that that's what they're working on a couple of places in town. But this would, you know, this would be other kinds of, I'm thinking of some of the places even over in East Milton, we have some houses that, you know, have carriage houses that are, you know, protected because it's been allowed use for, you know, a long period of time, avoiding the word grandfathered. But, you know, so it's not something that's only, you know, Canton Ave that, you know, these, this by law hopefully would apply to other kinds of places as well.
Thank you. I'm sorry, we can carry on now.
Great. Thank you, Danny. And thank you, Kathleen. That's a really good jumping off point for us. So thank you for all of your hard work. We have one more item under zoning and then we're going to get to two two seven. Thanks to all the residents and the applicant who have been waiting for quite some time. But the, Tim, do you want to kick off the Walcott Woods change or do you want to just turn that over to?
I, I, I think we'll turn it over to Ned. I think he can probably do the best job of explaining it.
Okay, Ned Corcoran, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. It's been a couple of months since I've been back before you and hope you haven't missed me. But thank you for the opportunity to be here. And thank you to you and and the Select Board both for agreeing to at least review this proposed amendment on fairly short order. This unfortunately would be the third time that we will have amended the by law that deals with greater states since the Greater States by law was passed only a couple of years ago. But an issue popped a couple of weeks ago on the sale of one of the units. A single woman divorced age, over the age of fifty-five was purchasing one of the new units coming online and was advised by her lawyer that her college son would not be able to spend the summer with her when he was home from college because the the existing language of the by law simply says that it can only be occupied by persons over fifty-five. So with that as a starting point, my recollection of the process that we went through several years ago in defining this zoning, we never really focused on what was over fifty-five and what might be appropriate exceptions to the notion of somebody living with a person who's over fifty-five. We certainly intended that the primary occupant, the owner of the premises would be fifty-five or older, but didn't ever really thought about the idea that person might be fifty-eight with a fifty-three year old spouse or significant other who would be living there with him or her. That they might have a dependent adult child who's handicapped or otherwise dependent on them would need to live with that, live there. And other short-term type of occupancies for other adults, whether they are children over the age of eighteen who were in the last couple of years of college before they are able to move on and establish life on their own. And so we, we, we have drafted, taken a by law that was recently enacted in the town of Belmont separate project that Northland has with the McLean Hospital site. It's a by law that is parrot, an earlier by law that was adopted by the town of Belmont. And then we understand it's fairly common among municipalities that have adopted age restricted bylaws and presented that as a means to think through what are the different types of issues that could pop up in the process of selling and or owning a unit. It's interesting, Jack Dolly himself is fifty-nine years old, his wife is fifty-three. They live in an age restricted development in Concord. Age fifty-five and older, he is the, obviously a primary occupant, but he's allowed to be there with his wife. They have two adult children, a daughter who's twenty-five, lives in Minneapolis, teaches school when COVID hit and then the George, the racial, the race incidents that arose. She decided she needed to get out of Minneapolis for a period of time and she came back to Massachusetts for six weeks and was able to live with her parents. Her other sister is a recent graduate of University of Wisconsin. She too had to come home for a period of time. And so we're able to do that. But the opinion that was rendered by this other attorney would say that under our existing zoning, that couldn't happen. And I don't think that's what was ever intended. We have shared this proposed by law with the neighborhood through a standard periodic email and mailings. I've shared it particularly with Tony Chikello, who represents one group of abutters. They have some questions and some concerns that need to be addressed and answered. Tony and I have discussed whether it would be appropriate to slow down on the advancement of this by law to the town meeting warrant. We have agreed, obviously subject to this board's consent, that we should move forward, that we would request that this board advance this language to the town meeting. We understand that the Select Board voted last night to open and close the warrant for the purpose of receiving this by law if the planning board were to vote to advance it. And that within the, the next two months, we would engage in a more robust discussion with the abutters with this board about any amendments, modifications that should be made approaching the public hearing, which would either be at your next meeting, three weeks from tonight, or presumably on November twelfth. So we have three, three to five weeks to address issues prior to the public hearing. You have the opportunity to address further issues at the public hearing. You still need, would need to vote a recommendation that would be taken to the warrant committee and then advanced to town meeting. And my representation to him and to you would be that if we are not able to arrive at a consensus, that we would accept a motion at town meeting to refer the matter back to the planning board for further study. So that could be advanced again, if and when appropriate. We do, we do, it is a bit time sensitive for us because we do have a pending purchase and sale agreement with this woman that is somewhat conditioned on our ability to solve for this issue of her son. And, and so, you know, one of the things that, that I said to Tony and I've said to Jack is, you know, this is a fifty-four unit, age restricted townhome development. All fifty-four owners, buyers are buying into the same promise that they will be cooperating with each other to protect each other from any abuses of the age restriction process and other components as well. Normally you would handle this more specifically in the bylaws and the condominium documents that get drafted. And the condominium association would be empowered through those documents to enforce any violations that could occur. It's highly unlikely that you would see violations of any substance. But having said that, it is not, I get where the lawyer is coming from. I can't say that I agree with him. But having approached that issue, I think we need to find a way at least in the, in the body of the by law to address that as much as we can. What I don't know is whether we've captured all of the types of issues that could arise, so we don't have to come back again. And I don't know whether we are either sort of overly restrictive or unreasonably unrestrictive, you know, our timeframe is appropriate and those types of things. So with that, I would, I would just simply ask that this board agree to advance this proposed amendment to town, to the warrant for town meeting review. And then we will work as hard as we can in the interim to make sure that we arrive at a good outcome. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Tony Chikello is on this call. Tony, did you have anything you wanted to add on behalf of the neighborhood?
Thank you very much. Tony Chikello, fifty-five Houston Avenue. I'm here primarily representing my client, Jack Weeks, and a number of other people in the, in the neighborhood that, that I have spoken to so far. There are concerns that they've got, you know, I started to look at the by law and sketch out some of the, you know, the parade of horribles, how, what could happen under this by law. You know, some of those things are not likely, but there are some real concerns and issues that I think are going to need to be addressed to probably tighten this up before it would be acceptable to the neighborhood. You know, there's been a lot of discussion with a lot of neighbors, my client and others about what this development was like. And, you know, when there were minor architectural and other changes, my client wasn't back to argue about those. This is an issue that we do have some real concerns about. We're based on, you know, Ned's representation to us and to you about the, the effort to get to a resolution. We're, we're okay with moving this forward. It's a fast process, maybe a little too fast, but sometimes you need, you know, deadlines to focus people's attention. So I think we are going to have to look at these, this issue. And I think all of the neighbors, you know, if to the extent that they have issues or concerns should be to be brought into the process. I'm really focused on, you know, a group that I've been working with, but others need to be notified as well. So with that, I'd
Thank you. Okay, Kathleen and Danny, do you guys have comments?
Well, I just have to disclose that actually the original zoning for the McLean Hospital in Belmont was something that I worked on. So it's funny that this is now coming back, you know, from Belmont over here. I've also used language like this in comprehensive permits that I've written for age restricted housing that's been built under chapter forty B. So I, and I took, I take, took a look at it and I think it's fine. And addressing the neighborhood's concerns is something that I think should be done by the condominium documents. We have, if we have this sort of zoning in place, allowing, setting forth a framework, but the actual enforcement of it and fines that are imposed, issues that are addressed with people that are not complying with the condominium documents ought to be in the condominium documents and dealt with by the condominium association. And, and I, I, I appreciate the comments that would be coming in from other people, but, you know, I'm, I'm okay with moving this along and having a public hearing on it to, you know, get official responses from the, from the neighbors.
Danny?
I, I actually, I, I think the language is overly broad. I, I think Tony brought up some good points. I think there, I think it's a bit open. I, I don't think it's ready to move forward yet. And I, I don't like the idea of I, I don't think it's ready to move forward yet, and I, I don't like the idea of. Putting things forward as a placeholder. I, I really think it's best to have something in good shape before we. Send it along as a placeholder. Um, I think. This is a little bit tricky for me because I, I was um, I went to a lot of the community meetings. Before I was on the planning board on this one, this has been going on for years and fifty five plus was sold as, as a feature. And, you know, the neighborhood, the community, the town, the staff, to my knowledge. Never asked the developer to put any age restrictions on, on their proposal. The developer, to my knowledge, came up with the concept and and sold it to all of us in the town. The planning board, the warrant committee, the select board, the neighborhood, the town meeting. So they were all, you know, sold on this fifty five plus cluster. And I don't know that it would have gotten past some of the early stages or the middle or the late stages without the fifty five plus. You know, care, you know, feature. Earlier on, it could have been twenty some odd houses as a subdivision, but. There was a concession made for roughly fifty uh townhouses. Um, so there were concessions made and it was, the concessions that were made were balanced out by the fact that this was gonna be fifty five plus. So, you know, I, I, I don't have a problem if it is fifty five plus, if, you know, some, some. You know, resident in there needs someone overnight to help them, you know, a home health aide or something like that, I totally. You know, understand something like that, or if they have, you know, uh, one of their children becomes disabled and has to come and stay. I think that that would be understandable, but the fifty five plus feature. Was something that town meeting members and other members and other elected officials bought into because it saved us on. Town infrastructure costs, um town traffic mitigation, town parking. Uh on and on and on, and we went through a very lengthy process where we were here, you know, sometimes eleven o'clock at night. Uh, you know, picturing fifty five plus community and and figuring out the best sidewalks for them and so on and so on then. And the, all the stormwater systems and the roadways and everything was all geared toward fifty five plus. So, um. I was a little bit uh thrown by this and I'm also not comfortable with it being rushed. Um, I, I understand Tony is doesn't mind a deadline, but you know, we, we've just been hit with two forty Bs tonight. We got a lot to do. And I think we've, we've, we've given a lot to this project, so I, I would like to see something in better shape. That the neighborhood is comfortable with, uh you know, that the neighborhood and the community and all the public officials that worked on this. Need, need to know that when a developer comes in and they sell a feature like this one. And we balance it all out and we, and we really work with the developer and we really did work with this developer really hard. That, you know, any, any major change like this is gonna have to be done very carefully. And and I, I want the community buy-in um before we move it forward. Thank you.
How is it a major change? If, would be, if you, I mean, I'm just asking because it's, it's still is age restricted.
Right.
It's still age restricted, you still have to have one person in there, you know, that's over fifty five. I mean, you know, if I move in and I get lucky and marry a guy who's thirty, I mean, do I then have to move out? So, so, so I mean, you know, so I, I don't know, you know, I, I, this is.
I'd like to see tighter language. I'd, I'd just like to see tighter language. Um. You know. I'd just like to see tighter language because I, I do think that there, I think it's wide open. I think Tony mentioned. That there are a bunch of examples to leave this open.
Well, I, I, I just, for me, I'm just sort of saying, well, as I said, you know, no, I'm, I'm not young, but if I got. Lucky and had somebody move in, you know, with me as spouse, um that was significantly younger, I don't. You know, I don't see how you could even remotely enforce that to say that.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm fifty two, my husband's over fifty five, I have a daughter in college. And I would say I'm fifty two, I, 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 I don't necessarily have the right to move into a fifty five plus community yet. Like, I'm gonna have to wait till I'm fifty, doesn't mean I can't live in Milton, there's plenty of other places to live in Milton. But I would say, oh, I guess I don't apply to the fifty five plus because I'm only fifty two. It just is what it is. It's okay. I don't. The neighbor in the town never said, we want you to limit the age here. They offered it as a feature.
I, I wanna, I wanna.
Hold on, hold on, Ned, please.
Yes.
Danny, are you done?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I wanna just give to guys who has just joined us, um Cheryl Taggays is a board member who had another conflict this evening, but she is here. Cheryl, we just went through the presentation on the proposal to um adjust the fifty five. Age restriction or the requirements of it um for Walcott Woods, and I don't know if you had any. Feedback from the, I, I don't know if you saw the presentation or if you had any feedback from the um, the article itself. Before we hear from the applicant again.
Thank you, April, um and sorry to join the meeting late. Um. I uh did not hear the presentation, but when I read this, when it came in, um. At, at first, when I heard there was going to be a request for uh changing the, the fifty five requirement, I thought. Okay, they're gonna remove it entirely and I would have a concern about that. Uh but here it seems very um limited in terms of what they're trying to accommodate. And um, you know, with covid, we are all seeing um differences in our family makeups right now. I mean. Um, you know, people are having to quarantine together, especially young people, young adults with their parents. I mean, if. You, you can follow the news and see it everywhere. And I think, uh, you know, while. When conditions change, we have to consider these kinds of requests because the world doesn't stay static. And so. Uh I think that this is a reasonable request um to uh allow flexibility um. For the sale of these units. And I think we all would like to see success at this project. We, we all worked long and hard on the zoning. And on this special permit. So that's my thought.
Okay, um, so my feeling is that um. Don't really have a good handle on how, how this works in other communities. I would like to know a little bit more about that. Um. Whether or not fifty five and over really does mean every single member of, and every single unit is fifty five and over, I don't know. Um, so I'd kind of like to know what the industry standard is, but I think the request of us, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Ned, but the request of us is. To uh uphold the Board of Selectmen's decision last night, or what exactly are you asking us to do? I know you want us to move forward to a public hearing and give you time to work this out with the neighborhood, which I would strongly support. Anything moving forward has to be worked out with the neighborhood. Um, but what is, what, what is the action you're asking of us tonight?
I think the action, thank you, I think the action that you need to take tonight would be to vote to. Put this to the select board for inclusion on the warrant. The select board voted to open the warrant to receive it. As long as the planning board voted to present it uh fo- to move it forward to the warrant.
And that has to happen this evening, or could that happen after our next meeting?
I think it has to happen this evening because um there, there are timing issues with the printing of the warrant. So I know that Tim and. Um, Mike Dennehy had worked back and forth together on logistical issues regarding whether or not this could happen. I was surprised yesterday to see on the um select board's agenda that they were taking the matter up last night. Uh but they did take it up last night for the purpose of opening and closing the warrant so that they could receive. This article in time to, to have it, make it to the printed warrant. Knowing that you still have to conduct a public hearing, it still has to be a presentation to the warrant committee. And that the warrant committee ultimately is the warrant committee's recommendation to town meeting, that is the. Motion on the floor uh for town meeting to vote on. The only other thing I would say is.
Are you proposing that this would be a planning board article?
It has to, it would have to be a planning board article because it's not a citizen's petition.
Okay, um, so I think, Danny, I understand you have concerns about advancing it when it's not fully baked. Um, it sounds like Kathleen and Cheryl would be comfortable doing that for the sake of moving the issue along. Um, the Ned has, or Tony has said that the neighbors are inclined to work with. Um, Northland to try to fix this in short order so that we would have a green sheet, I suppose, or a, a revised recommendation to the warrant committee. Um, and Ned has presented an openness to do that and willingness to do some more homework and tighten this up. So I guess uh the board. Would have to vote whether or not we want to put this forward. Go ahead, Danny, please.
Um, I, I just wanted to mention one other thing. I, I think we need to assess if we were to make exceptions on this fifty five plus. Um, development, would it impact other fifty five plus developments in town? In other words, I don't know. Home Inc. or, I don't know, Fuller Village, any of the fifty five plus communities. You know, that's, that's why I said, the one provision that I could see that I, I think I would welcome anywhere is if. You know, an elderly person needs overnight medical care or help or assistance. Um, that, that would be appropriate in any of the fifty five plus communities. I understand people's concerns about college kids and families during pandemic. I want to be sensitive to that, but I, I also. I, I think there are ways to do it with more restrictive language. Um, so. I just wanted to, I just wanted to put that into our thought process that what, whatever we accept here. We, we want to be fair to the other fifty five plus developments too. It's something that came up.
Uh, just, excuse me, but are the other fifty five um ones in a great estate P U D?
No, uh, this, the, the, the Carberry Estate, Walkout Woods project is, is the only project we have under the great estate zoning, so.
So this is only amending the greatest state zoning, it's only gonna affect stuff that's built under the state.
Right, but, 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 but if, if we accept something here, then we should, we should think. About fairness to the other fifty five plus.
Not necessarily.
They're.
They're already built.
Right.
They're also not.
They're already built, they've already got permits, they've got condo documents that control all that sort of stuff. So change in the zoning isn't gonna do anything for an existing project, they'd have to amend the condo docs.
Madam Chair, if I may, um, the other developments in town, Home Inc. is a sixty two and over, it's allowed under its. As a nonprofit entity under special zoning. What, um, the other senior housing is all nonprofit owned under and and guided under their own. Uh bylaws.
Do they, do they allow college students to stay?
No, because none of them are two and three bedroom condominium units. They're all single bedroom, um, uh assisted living. Independent living type of, of units, they're not. And whatever their condo docs are, the docs are there, they're allowed to do what they do, but there's no, there's no mention of any of that in the zoning. Uh in, in, with, with respect to those projects, they were all done as, as nonprofit uh form of entities in a different time.
Do, do you know if they allow like health, healthcare aides and stuff to sleep with?
Most of them have uh live in healthcare aides, it's part of the, it's part of the program that's available to you when you go and live there. Fuller Village has staff, um, you know, Winter Valley has staff, uh they, they're independent living with, with senior, with assisted. On, on, onsite twenty four hours available to the community. It's a, they're not, they're nothing like this. These are, you know, these are two and three bedroom condominium units um that are. Essentially single family homes, um but restricted to um ownership, certainly a fifty. Primary resident of age fifty five and over, then a question separately as to who else might live there and for what amount of time. And so we're happy, as I said, to, and anxious to work with the neighborhood to look for ways to, to tighten this up and make it work better. And, and I agree with Tony that this, there's so much, there's always only so much time to allocate to. Different uh matters. If we allocate the right amount of time now and the next year term, I think we can come to a good outcome. Uh and I would just request that this uh board advance the bylaw so that we can, we have an opportunity to get there.
I, I just have another question. So at, at Winter Valley and Home Inc., there's sixty two plus, do they have? Like an anchor, so you have somebody who's over sixty two and then you can have somebody who's younger, not, you know, under sixty two?
Uh, Winter Valley is, is senior living. It is, and it is specifically senior living, independent, uh senior and some assisted. Home Inc. is an, is a rental um for a person sixty, over sixty two. I don't know for sure, but my guess is that the primary occupant must be sixty two, could have a, a wife or a husband. Who's, who's less, then there are no children living there. Um, they're, I think they're one bedroom units, they, they, they. Pay upfront for the ability to rent for a period of time. Um, and then when they move out, there is the, the initial capital investment is paid back to them. There's a waiting list of people trying to get in, uh et cetera, so. But it's a, it's a completely different type of housing situation than what is proposed here, which is. You know, individual unit owners own their units and, and they live in them and then, you know, at such point as. You know, the, the.
Yeah, most of the time when they're rentals, Jenny, is that, you know, you have a period of time, you know, to. If you, if you had a child, you have a period of time, like a year, to sort of move out and find someplace else. Um, but those are all built under different zoning than this one is.
I hear you, I hear you. I was just trying to, I was just trying to see how it all works. Thank you.
You know, this, the last thing I would say is this, you know, the, this bylaw. Grew out of Woodmere, which was an empty nester, active adult empty nester. The town requested that we consider restricting it to fifty five and over. It's not something that we came to the town with initially. Um, we were willing to accept it uh as a, as a condition of, of advancing this as part of the, the broader. Large puzzle that we had to put together. But Woodmere is, you know, is a, age restricted empty nester, two and three bedroom units. There are no children. There's a mix of ages, they're not, you know, not, not all of them are owned and occupied by people over the age of fifty five, but they're all people who've had their children. You know, downsized into a smaller unit, it's easier to maintain, um they can lock, turn the door, lock the key. Go to Florida for the winter or go to Arizona, come back when they want to come back, um and they're there part time. And, and that's what this is with, with the added uh component that is, that you must be age fifty five and owners to be in. An owner of, an occupant of one of the units.
So Ned, I'm just, I'm gonna interrupt you because we still have several things on our agenda. Um, so what I, my feeling about this is I'm not terribly sympathetic. Uh about the sale. Um, I understand why Northland wants to execute the purchase and sale, but I mean, that's. Not something that I think that this board should be terribly concerned about as far as timing. However, I do think that this is a policy issue that does need to be addressed at some point. It's gonna come up again and we may as well address it now. Um, so what I would recommend is that. Whole lot more homework be done with the neighborhood. Um, I would like to, when you come back before us to have more information on industry standard and what. Other projects do, uh maybe in surrounding communities, so we have a better feel for this. And whether or not there's any impact on any other fifty five and over developments in our neighbor, in our town. Which it doesn't sound like there would be, but if you could confirm that for Danny, that would be helpful. And I would be inclined to accept a motion to advance this article to the select board with the understanding that. We have a lot more homework to do and we anticipate this to be tightened up and revised in time. Um, to be submitted to the warrant committee before they have their hearing.
I would make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote. Kathleen O'Donnell.
Yes.
Cheryl Taggays.
Yes.
Jenny Swenson.
No.
April Anderson, yes. Okay, um, Tim, we have one more item on Walcott Woods that is a technical item. We need to revote an issue that we had already voted. I don't know if you have anything to say about it, that's three minutes or less, and if you do, we should do this now. Um, and then we can move forward to two two seven because there are. People waiting.
If, if I, I think, I think, I think I can do it if we just do it. Um, so you may remember um about a month ago, uh, we had this. We had discussed with Steve Gallagher, who, who is on the call. He's the project manager from Northland. About what, what they had considered to be a de minimis or, or to use the language of the special permit. An unsubstantial change. To the. To the special permit. And, and I'll, we'll describe that in a minute, and I may ask Steve to just sort of blast through it. Because he knows it better than I do. One thing that, having kind of reread the special permit. That I, I, I noticed is that there is a procedure in the special permit that it is, do you guys see me scrolling furiously through the special permit? Okay, good. Yeah, just close your eyes until it's done, because you'll get dizzy. There, there is a procedure about amending the special permit that I, I, I've brought up on the screen right now. Obviously, if Northland were to come and say, we want to do. You know, we want to do sixty units instead of fifty four units. You know, that would be, that actually probably needed zoning change. So that's not a good example. You can imagine what a substantial change to the special permit would be. A, a. Insubstantial amendment. I, I, I think we all can probably agree, because we did agree a month ago. That the kind of unit reconfiguration kind of within a pod of townhouses. You know, was, was, I, I think everyone generally agreed that's an insubstantial amendment. It doesn't, you know, derogate from the intent of the zoning. It doesn't. Have an adverse impact, actually reduces impacts of the project. So I think, you know, the board was inclined to, to approve that change. The, the amendment process, though, and you can see it on your screen. You know, I'll go to the middle of the paragraph. Applications for insubstantial amendment shall be subject to such notice as the planning board deems reasonable. But shall include notice to abutters, the Blue Hill Neighborhood Association or Successor Association and the select board. In the event that any board member or interested entity notifies the board that the amendment is substantial, it shall be so treated. That's interesting language. I, I, I understand the intent of it. It's something I haven't really seen before in a special permit, which is kind of why, I, I don't think it was anyone's instinct to. Act on that, but we want to make sure we do this thing the right way. And so the, 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 the plan that Steve Gallagher. Had proposed to us, which I think I agreed was a good plan. Was to use the periodic updates that Northland is required to make by the special permit. As a kind of, you know, news, you know, about the project to include this proposed amendment. And to notify people who are on the distribution list, which I believe includes all of the abutters as well as other interested parties. That this, there would be, you know, further discussion here tonight and that if anyone, you know. Speak up or forever hold your peace essentially. And that's how we can kind of navigate. You know, the requirement to, you know, notify folks and give them a chance to, you know, notify the board. If they consider the amendment to be substantial. So I think with that. April, if, if, if we can allow Steve Gallagher to just really quickly run through. The proposed change even, even quicker than he did the last time. And then we can maybe see if there's any folks here that are inclined to speak about it.
The only thing I'll add to that is if there are folks on this Zoom that wish to weigh in, please raise your hand while this proposal is reviewed. And Steve, if we could. That would be terrific. Yes.
Perfect. So this is a change that affects building five, six and eleven, which are basically near the intersection at the center of the site. And essentially what we're doing is rotating units within the existing footprints that are already approved. We're not moving buildings around. The footprints stay the same, but the units that are in one place move to another place. Kind of a swap within those three buildings. And the reason for doing that was not to change the architecture. We're not doing, it's not to change. Number of bedrooms or anything like that. It's essentially just. A site planning change that allows us to work with the existing topography in a little bit more efficient way, in a way that's a little more natural. So it's. Kind of like something that follows from the new architecture that we did in the spring. As the architects are getting into it, they're kind of. Working out some details like that. So that's really all it is. It's just, you know, it's not a substantial change to the project. It's a aesthetic and cycling change.
The board had a presentation on this. That was a longer presentation. Couple meetings ago and we voted that we all agreed that this was an insubstantial change and we thought it was an improvement to the project. And I'm looking through here and I don't see anybody with their hand raised. So I'm going to assume that. Those on the distribution list and the abutters in the neighborhood association agreed because it did not come this evening.
So I haven't, I haven't received any correspondence on this issue either, so.
Okay, can you state for us what you want us, our motion to be?
So I, I, I think the motion should be that the, the change to the site plan. As presented by Steve Gallagher tonight and at the previous meeting. Represents an insubstantial amendment to the special permit. And that the board approves it.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we're gonna do a, oh, anybody want to discuss? No, we're gonna do a roll call vote. Cheryl Taggias.
Yes. Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell.
Yes.
April Anderson, yes. Great, thank you. Now let's move on to two, two, seven Pleasant Street. And again, apologies to the neighbors and the applicant who have been waiting. Honestly, had a lot of business before us this evening. Tim, do you want to give us just an update on what has transpired since we heard this at our last meeting?
Yes, so I, I, I had distributed to the planning board some updated materials. That were submitted by the applicant based on our discussion at the, at the last meeting. Those include a. First of all, an update memo from Marion Mcetrick, the attorney for the proponent. Which is explanatory of, of all of the additional documents. There is a revised perimeter landscape plan. There is a revised grading plan. There is a memo from the Hunt Tree Service discussing some of the existing trees and their condition on the site. And finally, there is a revised construction management plan. With, with, with the chair's permission, I'm gonna ask Marion Mcetrick to discuss. All of those other documents besides the revised construction management plan, because there are some, some notes. That I have added to that document based on discussion that I had recently with the building commissioner and the town engineer. So. If, if Marion can take it away.
Okay. Thank you. You can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So there are relatively limited changes in each of these documents that I submitted last week. There's an updated grading plan because we were able to remove, the engineer was able to remove a short section of retaining wall. That's on the side of, of lot one. And I know Mrs. Classby has asked me several times since then, are we sure removing that retaining wall won't affect the drainage? Or cause any more problem with stormwater management? So. Maybe when I finish speaking, the engineer could address that again, but he's, he feels it will not. It was a very shallow, I think a two foot deep. Retaining wall, but he can explain that better than I can. The second document. Was an updated perimeter landscaping plan. Again, only one change. And these, this is based on some suggestions and comments that Danny Swenson made at the last meeting. We were talking about varying the landscaping along the. The side of lot four and lot five where the neighbor is. And instead of just having a solid row of arborvitae. We suggested that we could take out a group of our arborvitae's in back of each lot and replace it instead with a larger tree. And our suggestion was that the neighbor who was on that side would be able to select. What type of tree, although I think Danny had said it would be nice to do tulip trees and that would be fine too. So if the planning board has a. An opinion about that, that's fine, but we did think it would be nice to ask the neighbor on that side what type of tree they'd like. You'd have to choose from the town's accepted tree list. And then the. The, the other, we spent quite a lot of time, or the owner did, with the arborist, Mr. Hunt. Visiting the site, examining each of the trees and evaluating them. So I didn't write that letter, but their details are in the letter. And he explains in some detail which trees should be retained in the front and can be retained. Because some of them are near the corner on, with the neighbor on lot five. And that there are other trees that have to be removed because of their condition, but also because their roots would be interfered with by the drainage structures. That are part of this stormwater drainage plan for this development. His letter is detailed and describes exactly which trees he's talking about. He then goes on and evaluates the trees. On the right, on the side where we're talking about changing their arborvitae's, the existing pine trees. And a couple of other types of trees that are along that edge. The pine trees he, he evaluated as being diseased. And I believe that one of the trees came down in the storm last night. But in any case, the owners of the adjacent lot had asked us from the beginning to remove. Those trees because they've been struggling with them for years and they've had to, they had to treat them and take, do some work on them. They were very tall pine trees. So I think Kyle Harnish could describe for you which tree fell. But it, it just kind of further proved that the condition of those trees was not very good and they were really big. If there had been a house constructed on lot five when that tree fell, it would have smashed the house. That's how big it was. But in any case, the, the third item, the letter from Richard Hunt was intended to give you much more detail. About the condition of trees on the site and why certain trees are being removed from the site. And it was intended to supplement the information we had already provided. We had listed trees that were going to be removed and we listed trees that are going to be planted as part of the landscaping plan. The only real change in the landscaping plan would be to add those two larger trees in place of arborvitae's. On the side that you can see in this drawing. Each time, I actually made two changes to the, I know I'm not going to talk in detail about the construction management plan. What's happened is when we were asked for supplementary information, I tended to go back to the construction management plan and put all the details in that plan. And so in some cases, sections became very detailed, or maybe they didn't belong in the construction management plan. But all of the changes we've made in that plan have been in response to concerns expressed at the previous hearings. And sometimes comments coming back to us from planning board members through Tim Churwinski. So if they don't belong in the construction management plan, they certainly can be put into a separate memo that will become part of the record for the hearing. That's pretty much my summary of the changes that we've made since the last meeting.
Okay. Any board members have any questions for Marion? And if not, we're gonna open it up to the public. Members of the public, please raise your hand with the raise hand function, or if you're on video and you just want to wave.
April, do we want to talk through the construction management plan before we go through public comment or?
Yes, I apologize, Tim. I forgot we were getting back to that. Yes, please.
So a, as I said, I, I, I met with. The, the building commissioner and the town engineer regarding this, the construction management plan and there's been. There's been so many changes to this thing that unfortunately it did take until this time for it to be appropriate to engage those. Those guys in this conversation, which is why we're talking about this now instead of previously. And, and as Marion alluded to, you know, to, to. She, she's very good about getting all the details down, which is, which is important. But there, there may be some places where the construction management plan is, is not the appropriate place for some of these details. And, and rather either a decision or, or as she maybe mentioned, another type of document that could be appended. You know, the, the, the general issue being that, you know, the construction management plan eventually goes to the building commissioner. And it's, it's, it behooves everyone for it to be as, as easy a document for him to read and enforce and understand. As possible. And so we want to make sure that we are, you know, giving him a document that is, that is enforceable. And, 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 and just makes. Just makes it easy to, for, for, for people to understand what's going on. And so I'm gonna kind of go through some of the, some of the comments that I made in, in the marginal notes based on that conversation. One of them, we can probably hopefully put this to bed right now. That in the, in, in the section on responsible person, section one. That there'll be a notification of the town planner of any schedule for blasting, which shall be posted on the town website by the town planner. Later on, there's a mention that there will be no blasting taking place. So if that's, if that's, if that's something that we want to maintain consistently with, we can just kind of take this out.
Yes, yes, take that out.
I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do this with comments because. That says remove this. I'm not gonna go back. So on the, on the start work notice, it says forty eight hours prior to the commencement of construction, the contractor shall provide written notice of the approximate start date. To the town's building department, engineering, a public works department and town planner, and such notice shall be posted on the town website. So it's to provide notice to abutters. And other members of the public. On the sort of the input end, the building commissioner has expressed to me that a, a phone call or, or an email will suffice to notify him. I know the sort of the, the intent of the written notice is, is, is probably, you know, to, to provide something to, to put up on our website. I think what I would contend is that if, if there's an interest on the developer's part to kind of notify folks about the start of construction. There may be better and more direct ways to do that rather than, than us posting something on, on the planning board website. Which would be relevant for two days and then kind of go away. So i- if there's an interest in doing that, I, I would try to come up with. Just something that you feel that you can do with, with a reasonable expectation of, of success and, and put that in. So maybe give that some thought while we're going through and, and we, we can go back to that one. So the, 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 the part about construction hours, and, and this is something that. I, I know there's been a lot of discussion about, and so you can read on the screen what the proposed. Construction hours are Monday to Friday, seven to six, Saturday, eight to five, nothing on Sunday. Any rock removal confined to nine to four. This is, this is something that obviously is, is very important. In my conversation with the building commissioner, what, what he has kind of mentioned to us is. The, in October of twenty seventeen, town meeting passed a construction noise ordinance. Or a bylaw, excuse me. Which I will bring up right now. You may recall this. It's chapter twenty six to the general bylaws. And you know, what it says is that. You can't do any of these activities except as may permitted by a construction management plan approved by the planning board or building commissioner. Which is what we're talking about right now. Or in the absence of an improved construction management plan, except between the hours of seven and seven, Monday through Friday, seven and five on Saturdays. And ten and three on Sundays and on legal holidays when the stock exchange is closed, provided. So we're talking about a construction management plan that the board may or may not approve. And so that's us, you know, that's what governs ultimately under the general bylaw. The request that I've gotten from the building commissioner is the extent to which the planning board on this project and future projects. Can maintain as much consistency with what's in the general bylaw passed by town meeting, the better. He's obviously going to enforce what is in the construction management plan because that's what it says. But from a kind of operational and procedural standpoint, it makes it much easier for him to do his job when. He's enforcing a consistent set of construction start times. You know, it, it doesn't seem like it's a big deal, a couple hours here and there, but when you've got, you know, a subdivision here, a special permit project there. You know, some other type of excavation going on somewhere else, it really starts to add up. And so I think just from a, the standpoint of. Setting expectations for how people can expect. for how people can expect the town in its capacity as the enforcing authority here to actually enforce some of these provisions, the consistency really matters. So.
Can I, can I interject on this one?
Sure.
Can you go back to that, what you had on the screen? I remember this discussion at town meeting. And this is very specific to say on projects not requiring a building permit. And I think that's hugely important because people were, at that time, were talking about doing things on their own property, like their home. They come home from work and they wanted to do something. When we're talking about building permits, to have somebody subjected, a neighbor subjected to construction noise for twelve hours for five days and being subjected to noise seven days a week, I don't think that that's what this bylaw had intended at all at the time that it was passed. So I just want to point that out. I disagree with the building commissioner completely on that one.
Okay. Let's, let's, if we want to go back to that, let's go back to that. I think it does warrant discussion, but I want to get through all of the notes here first. We're, we're in the parking section. And, and you see highlighted here, satellite parking at a private parking facility shall be permissible. This, this may require zoning relief for wherever the satellite site is. Marion happens to be the one on my screen shaking her head. So maybe, maybe when we go back to this one, she can, she can make a comment. You know, we were thinking of, you know, the more sort of permanent situation with BID Milton Parking Cards at St. Elizabeth's. You know, that's, that, that is a use that's not accessory to the church use. And so there was zoning relief that was, that was necessary there. So it's just something that I think we want to be careful of and, and kind of going in with our, our eyes open. This is where the no blasting is mentioned that we, we talked about earlier. Under site safety and access, trench excavation is, and, and both Joe and Chris, the town engineer, you know, brought this up, already very tightly regulated by the Commonwealth. Five-twenty CMR fourteen is there. I can send that along to anyone who's interested. I've got it in the folder. I, I don't know that any of these requirements conflict with, with that law. But I think, and then this is the opinion of, of, of both the town engineer and the building commissioner, that simply referencing five-twenty CMR fourteen would be, would be sufficient and, and would, and would protect everybody from maybe doing something that's crosswise with.
Yeah, I don't think we want to be drafting our own trench regulations. So you should just be saying it's got to be in compliance with state law.
Yeah.
The problem with drafting our own language is that it could conflict and it could not keep the pace. So I agree with Kathleen.
And I like Tim's idea of mentioning CMR, whatever the number is.
Yes.
I can't take credit for that. That was, that, that was all the guys that know what this stuff is about. Similarly, a lot of this section here is, is duplicative of the stormwater bylaw. Or, and, and otherwise regulated by an order of conditions from the conservation commission if that's, if that's necessary for this project. So what, what Chris Trudell, the town engineer, said was, was simply that, you know, the, the, the project will be, will, will comply with all of the best management practices outlined in, in the stormwater bylaw. I think the engineering department, DPW, town meeting, conservation commission have all done a really good job on that stormwater bylaw. And I think pointing to that, to, to the extent practicable, is, is, is the way to go.
That works for me. I mean, as I said, once again, I, I don't think we have the ability to draft our own stormwater regulations. So.
Me. Come on. Make this change.
This property isn't subject to the conservation commission. So you want to make sure that there are requirements put in place so we don't have a situation where another three-three-three brushel road. So as long as the stormwater regs prevent something like that happening again, then I would be okay with referring to those.
I'll double check with, with, with Chris about that. He's obviously, but both him and the building commissioner are kind of knee deep in that issue as well. So I think they, they share everyone's concern. So under material storage and earth stockpiling to block noise, the town engineer was, was fine with, with this, with this concept. But again, the stockpiling of material is governed by there, there, there's a, there's a defined kind of requirements for construction management plans in, in the stormwater bylaw. So we would want to include language that kind of, you know, again, refers to the stormwater bylaw. And he, he doesn't think that this type of thing is in conflict. But we want to just make sure that we're referencing, you know, the, the relevant bylaws kind of elsewhere, you know, in the, in, in the books. So we can, I, I can, I, I didn't, I didn't have, I don't have the stormwater bylaw on my fingertips, but that was, that language was directly from him.
I, I, I think that makes sense.
I do want to ask though, I, that you please check because I doubt that that stormwater bylaw addresses the stockpiling in the drip line of existing trees to remain.
Ah, but if we had Denny's bylaw in place, we'd.
This has not been just an issue, this has been an issue on nearly every construction site and it's very frustrating.
Can I just say one thing about that? I don't, it didn't sound to me like the town engineer and the building inspector said this language should be taken out. I think you might want to add a statement that these requirements have to be consistent with stormwater bylaw and regulations. Yeah, but you leave it in because as you say, it's quite specific and it addresses certain concerns. Okay. Here, I think you leave it in.
That works for me.
On, on section twelve, clearing of site, clearing of lots, it was, it was the building commissioner's opinion that it, it was much too detailed to be practical to follow. You know, given weather, given the uncertainty of the, the public health situation. You know, in, in, in normal times, you know, he's seen these types of timelines, you know, get thrown off by, you know, three days of rain and, and the thing is all set and done. So it, it, it struck him as, you know, setting the project up to fail in, in a lot of ways. And so there's a, there's a more general timeline later on in, in, in the plan that, that he felt was, was more appropriate. And so just sort of thinking through the implications of, you know, understanding that you want to put specific actions in, in an order. You know, what are the implications of, you know, what happens when the, the schedule gets thrown off?
So I think we need to think about it further though, not just remove it because three-three-three brushel road is another fine example of something that got way delayed in construction. And it had negative impacts on neighboring properties. And I think what we're trying to do here is, is help protect the neighboring properties where the neighbors have come forward and expressed concerns to us. And we know that the, these, there are a number of homes in very close proximity to this construction site. It's not out in an open green field. So while I think shall, you know, is, you know, going to be hard, I think we need some kind of language that they've said this is how long it's going to take and they've made that representation to the neighbors. They should be held to some level of accountability for that.
And I think that also addresses that some of the concerns about the noise too. Is that you then know how long or, you know, that particular activity is going to go on.
Are we going to ask? You have reasonableness language in the first sentence instead of shall.
My concern is, so we want the building commissioner to go out there, one week, two weeks, two days. I mean, how are we going to enforce this? We need to make sure that whatever we're doing is enforceable because I think that's part of what we ran into with three-three-three. Maybe it was unenforced or not enforceable. And so I, I mean, I just want to make sure that when we're consulting the building commissioner and he's giving us comments, that this is too detailed and impossible to adhere to. If we put it in there, that's great, but if he can't enforce.
Instead of shall be, could it be projected or, you know, some sort of?
I mean, maybe some kind of regular updates like Walcott Woods is providing us. And, you know, it doesn't necessarily mean the building inspector has to be out there on a weekly basis, but at least the planning department could get, you know, a weekly update so that the neighbors can feel as if they've gotten some accountability at some point. You know, it's not, what, what ended up happening at three-three-three brushel road was a stop work order was issued eventually, but that was a challenge too. There's a lot of discussion about whether that was an appropriate thing to do. It becomes challenging, but if we don't put it in there, then it's, we're not calling attention to it. And I think it, it is something that we want to make sure people pay attention to.
The one thing I would just want to say about three-three-three is they just didn't comply with their permit. I mean, it said no clear cutting and they clear cut the whole lot. It said stormwater system has to be up and running. It wasn't even installed before they started construction. So I mean, that, that, in that case, I think that's a bad actor. And for whatever reason, we weren't enforcing it. Problems. So I feel like it's hard to, I, I think many lessons learned through that process. But I don't want to compare that experience with this permit because we could put this in here and it could still turn into a three-three-three if they just don't do what they're supposed to do and there's no enforcement. So I'm totally comfortable with what you suggest as far as the notices. I think that makes a lot of sense. I don't, I mean, a weekly notice might be a little aggressive. Are you just proposing a weekly notice only in the, when they're doing the clearing?
Well, it, I'm not necessarily saying it's, it's weekly. It's whatever makes sense. I said weekly because that's the way this was outlined here, I think by Marion. But if it were during the time at which is the noisiest and where there might be runoff, I think weekly would make sense. But, you know, later it could be even monthly. I mean, it really, it was really tied to the progress of the work.
Periodic updates, right. I think no less than monthly for sure. But I think that that process for Walcott Woods is really effective. So I'm sorry. Tim, do you want to continue?
So the, Marion's got a note here. We can talk about it after, after I'm done. Because I mean, it is kind of tied to the, the same issue. The, the grading of the lots. The, the way, so there, there, there's two issues here. There's, there's one issue of making sure that the grading is what we expect it to be, which again, both the building commissioner and the town engineer had confidence that the existing procedures that we have that are followed for every building project, every subdivision, every thing that goes on in the town are adequate and, and, and sufficient to, to, to make sure that the grading is going to be what it is. You know, the, 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 what's approved on a subdivision plan becomes the, you know, it becomes the existing grade. And so when a building permit is applied for, for one of these houses, they have to demonstrate that the grade is the same in that application as the grade on the subdivision plan. When the house is built and they submit as-built plans, those as-built plans have to show that the grade is the same. And so there's, you know, there, there are multiple touchpoints, you know, throughout the building permit process for, you know, for, for verification of, of the grade. And, and as the town engineer kind of pointed out, you know, from the level of the road onward, if the, if, if they mess up the grade of the road or the road, grade of the road is different, then the grade of everything else is, is thrown out of whack. And so it's kind of, you know, he considers it to be a kind of a self, a self-correcting, you know, process. So it, it, in, in that regard, there's just some language here that, that probably just doesn't even need to be here, except to say that the grading of lots shall be shown as approved on the definitive plan. You know, the other issue is, is the issue that I think Cheryl has raised about, you know, trying to limit the amount of essentially clear cutting that happens by, by limiting the, the clearing to, you know, whatever, whatever building is, is being built right now. I think the, the language is, is, is suggested to be that, you know, you can't clear, no lot clearing until a billing permit application is filed for, for a lot. And, and Marion, I don't know if you want to talk through your, your note and, and talk about your potential solution to that.
Yeah, I don't know. Is it further on? I, I know I wrote something about this, but anyway, the issue on this development is that on lots one and five and lots three and four, there are drainage structures. And so we have to, and the construction will proceed with a clearing of the land beginning to create the, the roadway or the access and the installation of drainage structures, which is going to, which is going to take place in the beginning as, as early as possible in order to have the drainage structures available and usable as early as possible. Which means that if you set up in this development, if you say you can't clear the lots, and it does, it works for some other developments. But if you say here, you can't clear the lots at all until you have a building permit, then you can't install these drainage structures. And in order to install the drainage structures, you have to do the grading on the lot. So that requirement, in my view, doesn't work for this particular development. And, you know.
Marion?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry. There are drainage structures associated with each home. Is that correct?
Also, yes.
So the drainage, those drainage structures wouldn't go in until the home's built, correct?
Right, but those are for roof drain. Yeah.
So the, the thing that I'm concerned about still is the, you know, if it takes five years to build out this development, that you have a pad sitting there in a condition that's not the design condition from the stormwater point of view, because you're going to not have a structure, you know, for the individual lots in place yet. And I, I just don't want to see runoff during five years of pending construction or longer depending upon what, how the economy, you know, may shift or not over time. And so we need some provision if, if these structures are going to disturb the whole property, which I, I'm a little surprised that they would disturb everything. But then we need another protection. We need them to be planted. We need other temporary measures, you know. That's, you know, one of the things I've learned over time is that everybody considers it when the final build out, the final build out is done and everything works. But people don't think about the interim conditions frequently. And that's what I'm trying to get at here is to think of the interim condition so it doesn't impact the neighbors. So if there's another way to do it and, you know, Mr. Harnish and Mr. Burke have suggestions of what we can put here to address my concerns, then I'd, I'd welcome to see that language.
So I'm, I'm, if it's okay, I'd ask Kyle Harnish or Jim Burke to talk about that situation. If you've done this preliminary clearing and installation of drainage structures, now you've got three, five lots, or at least four, because four have drainage structures on them. And they're sitting there and potentially you aren't building the houses yet because there's some kind of delay. And there could be things that could happen that could cause delay. What would you do to stabilize that lot if you've already graded it and cleared it?
This is Jim Burke. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
So typically, all the products I've been involved in, in Milton and other towns, infrastructure goes in first. You, you bring in, you, you cut the road in, rough grid the road. You bring in the utility, water, the sewer, and the drainage. The drainage is important and that's a significant part of controlling the construction of stormwater throughout the project. So I, my recommendation i- is that, that you do exactly that. You, you put the, the entire stormwater system in. It's at quite an expense for the developer to put that kind of infrastructure in on the front end of the project. But, you know, it's, it's kind of an important piece of the puzzle to have it, have this system work all the way through construction.
For example, Jim?
You don't necessarily have to put the wall in on the foster side until those lots are are ready to be developed, if that's helpful. But.
I'm even thinking if you had a way to, in your pad, you not only do you seed it, but maybe you have a small retention in the pad. So if there's rain, it just collects there and sits there and permeates. Because you know, you're not, it's it's not the roadway and the initial roadway utilities. It's the having the fact that you've basically disturbed the entire site and it'd be years before some of it's ever built on. So.
That's, I mean, for for Mr. Harnish to to get the return on investment back from the roadway and that drainage system that goes on the ground, he's going to have to build all five lots fairly soon.
Well, he told us it would be a five year project, so that's why I'm using five years.
Understood.
Well, I can tell you right now, I've been through four housing recessions and I've seen stuff that's sat around for forever. So, you know, I'm sure that's not, it's never anybody's plan. But I'm, I'm sensitive to the fact that you're going to be putting all those, you know, you do all that storm stuff in and that goes in and the road goes in. But I think the question that Cheryl's asking is legitimate to say, what are you going to be doing to stabilize the rest of the site while you're waiting to build a house on it?
Kyle, did you have something to say? Kyle was raising his hand.
Sorry. Yeah, I was just trying to speak on on the fact that I somewhere down the line claimed it would take me five years. I mean, we're dealing with hypotheticals here. If everything goes well and I can move forward quickly and get the drainage structures in, it's my full intention to get these things going as soon as possible and build all these homes as soon as possible. But, you know, five years is a possibility. And I'm willing to work with the with the board and I've made suggestions in the sense that we need to clear for the main road. Four of the lots involve the drainage structures. The other lot involves the turnaround for the fire department. And then I'm, I'm willing to leave the perimeter trees around the property until, but by the request of some neighbors, they would like them removed sooner. So I'm trying to find a, you know, a workable solution here. But, you know, just to say I'm going to take five years to build the lots, that's a hypothetical.
Okay, so what's our solution? I mean, we've heard the challenge.
Yeah.
Heard the board's concern. There has to be an easy solution.
What you're looking for is sort of a fail safe provision that if a lot is going to be, you know, left and some of these, you're not going to build all the houses at exactly the same time. So you clear the lots, you start with lot five, you think you're going to start building on lot five, I believe that's what you told me. So the other lots are sitting there, they're cleared, they have their drainage. How do you, shouldn't you be seeding them? Shouldn't you do something, you know, to the surface so that there's, you know, just to control runoff and that kind of thing?
That that's actually a fairly typical step in a permit that we still have to file for once we get through the planning board. We still have to go get our NFTs permit. And and then there is a typical requirement that you do. If you have a, an area that's kind of like the unvegetated and open to erosion is that you do, that you do exactly that. You come in with some, some rye grass or you hydroseed it and make sure that it's stabilized. So it doesn't have a, you know, an erosive issue related to it. Construction management goes throughout the whole time that this site is open during construction. Erosion control barriers are set. One of the windows, one of the requirements for the soil spoils that are going to be along lot one for noise abatement, it'll be required to be ringed by erosion control, hay bales or silt fence or some some manner where so when it, you know, that soil doesn't disappear on you. There's the construction management itself is not only regulated, it's there's a lot of kind of common sense going on. If Pleasant Street is, you know, all of a sudden is muddy after a rainfall, that's something that, you know, the neighbors, I would imagine will make a phone calls to the building department and Kyle is going to have to get out there and sweep the street and try to figure out a way to make sure that doesn't happen again. One of the parts that we have in our construction management plan is a stone apron to assist in knocking the mud off trucks and prevent, you know, sediment from, you know, exiting the site. So the, I guess what I'm saying is that there are provisions already in there. The contractor that's going to be doing this work is responsible to make sure that that his work is contained on site. I certainly understand the state guys' concern with the garbage and vegetation and not, you know, just going in there and clear cutting the whole lot just because, you know, that's what the final plan shows. You know, the thing is, is that I believe the infrastructure should be installed. So it does, you know, protect the down gradient people in the infrastructure of the town of Milton. So the tools are there and the responsibilities are in the permit for the contractor. So the fail safes, I believe, are already installed. I think it's, you know, it's a matter of acting and making sure that they're acted on and responsible parties are taking care of it.
April, if I may, maybe Marion could take a look at revising the language just to refer to that permit as a minimum and wanting to make sure that, you know, some kind of language about the property being stabilized during construction, no matter the extent of that or duration of that construction. I'm fine with referring to something else that's already covering it, but I do want to highlight it here, just like we're highlighting other things.
So I think what we're trying to do, Cheryl, is get to the bottom of this. I think the highlighted things were the things that Tim wanted to address tonight. So that hopefully we can take a vote. So I don't know if there's, can we just bang out what the language should be here now?
Well, I mean, I guess if the point is to try and not be duplicative, I appreciate that. And if it's covered in other requirements elsewhere, so to Jim Burke's point. If if he can work with Marion on the on a way to reference that permitting in this, instead of all of this yellow, then I think that would, and if they send that to Tim and we're going to make a vote, I think, Tim, you understand what we're attempting to do here. I'm fine with Tim just reviewing that language.
Right.
And if, I mean, we have to submit a NFTs permit and basically it's another construction management plan, which will be very similar to the one that you're looking at. And we can certainly reference a point that the ground needs to be stabilized if it's going to lay fallow for over, say, four weeks. And it'll need to be hydroseeded in some fashion to stabilize it.
So the the last, the last thing in the notes, and we can probably go back to the top because I think there were a number of discussion points that we that we left in order to just advance through. The, the, the building commissioner is not going to, there's, what's required of his building permits is is up to his operation. And so he's, he's, he's just, he doesn't think it's appropriate for this construction management plan to dictate the contents of a building permit application. And so he, he he would, he would, he would strike this language and I, he felt pretty strongly about it.
Well, I kind of agree with him on that. It's his permit.
Yeah, but you know, we make approvals based on plans. And if those plans are just as good as the piece of paper than they're that they're on and they don't have to be followed, then what good is it to submit the landscape plan? It's like submitting architectural plans and when you're going to, like Walcott Woods, but they're coming back to us every time they change the design. I don't understand why this is different.
Well, I inserted, I wrote this language based on a comment Cheryl that you had provided. And actually, my reaction was a little different. I just was concerned because I think you said there could be no deviation in the landscape plan. And that's not what you want to say because they can obviously add landscaping and improve it. But the landscaping, it's just a sample landscaping for a lot is a minimum. So in terms of how it should be enforced, it's already a feature of our application. Whether it should be, so I thought the way to do it would be to say the building permit application must reference the lot landscaping plan. And I didn't think that was, I usually agree with Joe Prondak, but here I don't really see that that's so difficult. Because it's really, it's just one plan for all the lots. It's pretty simple, but it draws the attention of a buyer to the fact that, you know, the permit for the development that he's that his lot is being developed under requires that there be this minimum landscaping on each lot. I don't think that's too complicated. So, but I mean, I like to, I don't want to make Joe Prondak's life more difficult than it already is. I mean, how else are you going to do it? Are you going to make the planning director review every building permit application? It doesn't make sense. So that's my comment.
We've issued special permits where that's the case. I don't recommend it, but it's been done.
I know, but it just, where you have a building permit application that has to be filed, isn't that the time to just say that the building permit application has to reference this lot landscaping plan? And that's all it has to do. It's quite simple.
I agree with Marion about setting the expectation, you know, for the for the buyers. I mean, it may or may not be, I mean, I wish Mr. Harnish all the success with his project, but things change. And if if there were a different person finishing this development at some point, it would be clearly stated, you know, what their intentions are. And so that's why it's good to have things in writing in drawings. Because they they survive those of us who are on the planning board or those of us who are in staff or those of us who are building these projects.
On this next.
I would just add if you're.
Go ahead.
I would just add, if Joe Prondak feels that strongly about it, it might make it increasingly more difficult for me as I try to build these things.
But but what is difficult about it? It, it, it's a very simple landscape.
I'm going to interrupt you, Marion, because we need to move on. If our building commissioner is saying it's something he's not going to enforce, is that something we want to knowingly put in the?
Exactly.
I mean, that's a question for the board. I think we should keep going. But we can come back to it. I don't know that that's terribly helpful to have in the permit if we know it's not going to be enforced.
It actually shouldn't be in the building permit application. If anything, it would be shown as an as built, but yeah, let's leave. I don't, I don't know what to say about that. It's a condition in your permit. You write it as a condition.
Let's move on to the next thing. Go ahead, Tim.
So there's, there's a long sort of bit of narrative describing where trees and landscaping should go. Again, in the interest of keeping the construction management plan as a kind of manageable document, this, this language may be more appropriate to just go right into the decision or at least the discussion portion of the decision. You know, if it's important to know and to add context, that's, you know, that's, that's fine. But it's probably not, not the place to be in the construction management plan. And then.
Those were supposed to be conditions for the permit and I'd rather see them as conditions for the permit rather than included in a construction management plan.
Yeah, because it kind of buried there.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
Come on. Sorry. And then finally, just a similar, a similar bit about just the granite stones, not that, not that they shouldn't be there, but that it's more appropriate for it to go into the, into the language of the decision.
Yes.
Decision. And then finally, this, the schedule, you know, I think it's fine and good. I think just in relation to the previous schedule, they're talking about a little bit different things. But I think we talked about a solution to to the sort of the phase sort of approach. I, I think, so just so that we're, we're clear, this, this language.
Like shall do best efforts to achieve the following schedule or something like that?
Yes.
I mean, do we want to, do we want to keep the one week, one to two weeks, three to four weeks? Or do we want to keep it by sort of phase? And then, you know, the, the sort of the periodic updates serve as the, as the kind of the timeline.
Well, it sets out the the goals by giving it a timeline. I think, I mean, if you want to make it one to two, one to three, you know, three to five. I mean, I think give yourself some more flexibility in it. But I personally like having goal timeframes. Not mandates, but goals.
Yeah, so how do we say that?
Well, I mean, can we, can we, can we agree to come up with some more flexible, some more flexible timeframes, some, some language about maybe replacing shall with some type of language outlining the intent to to make the best efforts to do this. And then some language on periodic updates to the planning director on construct.
Yeah, let me sort of work at that. So, yeah.
But I want the periodic updates to go to the neighborhood.
How do we, so do, do they go in the mail? Do they go email? Like, is it posted on the fence?
Well, Northland does that email blast to folks that they've collected.
I actually have an email list of many neighbors and I, if I could get the email addresses for a few others, I would, it's fairly complete. It's really efficient. So if that's what you want to do, we could have the construction manager send out updates. I think we would probably be likely to do that anyway, particularly for certain types of construction work.
Well, I think it would help the neighborhood to have an understanding of what they can expect.
Right, so.
All right.
Regular updates by email communication with neighbors will be part of this, the construction management schedule. The language you might want at the beginning would be site clearing will be, will follow this schedule to the, to the extent reasonably possible. That that's a way of saying, you know, if you can meet it, you will. And if you can't, you'll try to stay as close as possible to it instead of saying shall be this.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, you could say the site clearing is proposed to be carried out in the following schedule as reasonably, you know, yeah.
Okay.
I'm working on it.
Yeah, okay, good.
Okay, so.
So where do you want to put the notice requirement?
I mean, should it just go in this section or does it need to go somewhere else?
Well, is it only, are you only giving them notice on site clearing?
No.
Well, there is, there is a notice bit at the, at the top about the start, the start work notice, maybe that would be a good place to put a kind of.
There because otherwise, if it's in site clearing, it's like, well, they're only going to give you notice of that, not of anything else. It sounds like you, April, would like to see something that's sort of a general kind of progress report on what's happening, you know, on the, on the site besides just site clearing, right?
So you want to post periodic progress reports on the website? As long as you're willing to do that, yeah.
And notice to the neighbors.
And provide.
I think, I, if we want to, if we want to post it on the website really bad, we can do that. I think.
No, I don't see any point in posting it on the website. Nobody's going to look at that.
Yeah, if it's already going to the neighbors, it can be on file in the, in the, the town planner's office. I think that's sufficient.
Going to go to the neighbors. I don't see any point in putting it on the website. Nobody's going to look at it anyway.
So periodic. So periodic email updates to neighbors.
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, I do read the Will Cut Woods updates. I, I think they are helpful, uh, to keep track. And so I, I, I do think it'll help the neighbors. And the planning department.
So we'll go to the town planner and the neighbors, periodic updates. Yeah. Okay. I got it.
I'm going to go back to the bottom because we were going from the bottom back up to, to, to address all these things. So, um, we're, we're going to, we're going to reference the construction management plan is defined by the stormwater bylaw. We're going to keep this language, but just modify it so that it, it reflects consistency with the stormwater bylaw. Let me make sure. Maintain this language, but modify to ensure consistency with. Uh, the same, same, same thing, um, with, with reference to the stormwater bylaw. Um, I think this, we, 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 we have a reference to the, the future Nifty permit, um, further down below, which I think is also related to erosion and sediment control measures. Perhaps reinforcing that here is also a good idea.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. Makes sense.
Um, we'll, we'll make this change, um, to, to reference, um, the relevant statute. Rock removal, that's, that's that. I don't know.
It, it, I, you don't need to put in every permit that, in other words, you can't, you couldn't do satellite parking if it wasn't legal. If you didn't, if, if it weren't going to be at a, a place that was allowed by our zoning, then you wouldn't be able to do it. I don't think you have to add a comment about the zoning.
I, I don't either.
I agree with you.
And in fact, this was just standard language taken from another permit. It's kind of there as a just in case, you know, but I, it seems unlikely in this particular five lot development.
We're done. I, I suspect I know what the answer is here, um, but I, I'm obligated to just make sure we resolve it, um, about the construction hours.
So originally my feeling was if we have this, um, instruction hours by law, we should stick to it. But actually Cheryl made a great point and I do exactly remember what she's talking about. And there was a robust discussion about that on the floor of town meeting. So she's absolutely right. If this is what has been proposed and floated with the neighbors and we still have to hear from the neighbors, but I, I think we should keep it. I don't know. And any other members have feedback?
Well, as a person over here in East Milton gets to hear construction on Adams Street constantly, but we don't get any notice at all. They've been ripping up that road for a year. You know.
Three years.
Yeah, it's ridiculous.
That, that's fine. Um, I wasn't, I wasn't at town meeting. That's, that's not how I read that bylaw. Um, I think it specifically excludes things that don't require a building permit, which leads me to believe that everything else refers to things that do require a building permit. But I, I'm, I'm not going to push on this if, if everyone kind of agrees that there was a understanding about the intent at town meeting. But perhaps the bylaw maybe should have been a little clearer on that.
Denny, what are your thoughts? Do you have thoughts on this?
Are you asking me?
Denny.
I'm asking Denny.
Sorry.
Yeah.
You're muted, Denny.
May I unmute it? Hi, hi. Um, I just wanted to suggest that maybe we think of starting at the same time as, as the other. The bylaw does. Um, so in other words, seven AM during the week is the same, but then, um, on the weekends, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I saw something at 10 AM and I was confused about that. On, on the other, on the one that was approved at town meeting was at 10 AM for the weekends? Saturday's 10, at 10 to three, I would think we should do 10 to three.
That was Sunday.
That's Sunday.
Oh, no, that's Sunday.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're not allowing Sunday at all.
Okay.
It's seven to five PM Saturday in the bylaw.
Okay. And we're doing seven to three. Okay. Then we are somewhat consistent. Okay.
More conservative and this is what we agreed to when we met with neighbors.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, I would have to say that it, that the developer would say that he would follow the guidelines that he told the neighbors anyway. So I, I, I mean, the, the bylaw calls for, it, it calls out construction management plans. As one of the, so I, I mean, that implies that you could have, you know, more limited or different hours if you don't exceed.
Yeah.
So I, I, yeah, I think it's okay.
All right. Thank you.
We, we just talked about this, this, uh, start work notice. This is where we're going to add the language, uh, regarding the periodic updates. We're going to remove the reference to blasting at the very top in the responsible person section. And I think we have, if everyone agrees that these misspelled, but probably okay notes reflect the discussion. I think we can, I think we're all set with the construction management plan.
Okay. Then let's go to the neighbors. Um, if you wish to speak, please raise your hand. See anybody raising their hand? Oh, Ms. Classby. Okay. Hold on one moment here. Okay, there you go.
She's still muted.
Yeah, I think you might be muted on yours. There you go. Okay. Name and address, please.
Hi, um, thank you. I'm Ann Classby, 235 Pleasant Street. And I, I know this has all been quite lengthy and detailed. I just have a couple of questions. Yeah. On lot one, um, what, as, as was said, there was, there was originally a short retaining wall that was supposed to hold back the soil. But now that's been removed and, um, supposedly the, the point of that would be so that it would avoid damaging the oak trees that are on my property. Which that, that would be fine if, if that's what it is. I, I'm not totally clear on that. This is why I'm asking. So maybe, um, Mr. Burke could address that?
Sure.
So, thank you.
I guess, I guess there was a concern about the wall and the wall was actually placed i- in the original design to, to provide a, a flat lot for the future construction of a, a home that was really kind of designed for a flat lot. The removal of that wall, um, just kind of, it, it, it created the lot, uh, to be a little less flat. In a sense that, so the cut at near your property line would be less. I agree with you. I don't think it would have a significant impact i- if, at all to the tree, but I just felt that i- at, at this point it just, it, 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 it can stay, it, it can go. It's, it doesn't have a significant impact to the design whatsoever.
No. Okay. And the trees should be okay?
Yes.
Okay. My other question was, and this is probably, you, you, you're probably the best person to address this one too.
Okay.
There, there are going to be two drainage structures down on Pleasant Street, lot one and lot five, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then there's going to be a third drainage structure, um, up here on the, uh, on the flat.
Uh, two and three, I think.
Yeah. Okay.
Yes.
So where, where's the water going to go from that third drainage structure?
There's a pipe connecting, uh, the, uh, that structure down to the structure towards Pleasant Street.
Okay, there's a pipe.
Yep. And, uh, and, and all those structures are watertight. That was one of the requests from the peer review engineer that, uh, no exfiltration occurs. Um, so all that water that's going to be collected is going to be contained in those tanks, stay in those tanks until the, uh, control structure out towards Pleasant Street releases it into the town drainage system.
Okay, okay. Excellent. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Is that it, Ms. Classby? Is that it for your comment or did?
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And I'm sorry that you had to wait until 10:23 PM.
That's okay. That's okay.
Trying hard to move it along for you. Sorry about that.
Very.
Um, others that would like to speak? Anybody? I don't see any hands raised. No vigorous waving at your screen? Okay. So what I'm going to do is entertain a motion to close the public hearing on the definitive subdivision 227 Pleasant Street. Now I have a motion.
Oh, jinxed. Second.
Is there any discussion?
Wait, can, can I, can I, can I really quick just clarify who made the motion and who seconded?
Denny made the motion, I believe. And did Kathleen second?
No.
Who seconded?
I second. I think Kathleen made the motion.
I made the motion, I guess.
I second. I thought I jinxed with somebody. So I'm blaming Kathleen.
No, I was busy rolling up paper.
For discussion, uh, April, before the vote, can, can I have Tim pull up the landscape plan?
This is the, uh.
Yeah. So can you zoom in to the landscaping on lots one and five along Pleasant Street? This is my, um, I just have a, a, a comment or question to throw out to the other board members. I mentioned earlier about wanting consistency, uh, in, in the documents so that people down the road who weren't part of the.
The wrong landscape.
Hearing. That's the wrong one.
This is, this is the one that has.
Part of it won't change. Um.
Yeah. I think this is the original one that has bushes along the edge of the street. And it's supposed to just have ground cover. So I must have used the wrong plan to provide your sketch showing you where we would take over our arboretis.
So that's my point. The landscaping plan should show the trees that are to remain and the, to be protected and an accurate reflection of the landscape that's being proposed along Pleasant Street. The other thing about that is there are existing stone retaining walls. Are those intended to be removed or retained?
They're staying along the street.
Yeah. So I, I would like the plan to say that those stone walls are being retained and protected and that the trees are there showing which ones they are. And then the revised landscape. I am fine if, uh, my understanding is that we would need to, um, be able to receive that plan. But if Tim or, or April tells me that they can receive that plan after we close the hearing. Uh, but I, I definitely want to see a plan that's consistent with what we've discussed and what the words say. Again, because these things live out beyond our timeframe.
Yeah. Cheryl, you know, when, when I'm going to draft a dis- a decision for the board to, to review and, and edit. And the, the first thing I have on my list is, because o- over the course of this hearing, we've kind of, you know, some sheets have remained the same, but a number of sheets have been changed. We'll want to get all of the, you know, a, a compilation of, of the most up to date sheets and those will be referenced in the, in the decision, the sort of the, the name and, and title of the sheet. And then the date of the latest revision. So, um, that's definitely something that, um, I am going to be, uh, try to be on top of. But, um, you know, when that decision eventually, that, that, that decision will be accompanied by a final set of plans. So I think we can all, um, hold ourselves accountable um, to that decision, uh, when we're, we're looking at it and editing it.
So as far as you and April understand that we can accept those plans after the public hearing is closed?
Yeah, I think so. I mean.
We've given you the information, but it's not all in one plan. And I think we have to study this to see how, how to do what you're talking about. The arborist is given a detailed description of trees that will remain. They're just not, but he's not the landscape architect. And, um, can we?
But Marion.
Can we take that plan and sketch on it or how, how?
Yeah, you can sketch that. My, you can see the point down the road. Some, let's say one of the trees is damaged. How do you refer to what tree it is? You know, if it's not on a plan.
Yeah, we didn't try to do that to begin with, but we do have the information as long as you're willing to accept it after you close the hearing, which you've already done. We'll do our very best to produce something that you can use.
We haven't closed a hearing yet. We're still discussing it.
Oh, good. Sorry.
And that, that's my point is I just want to make sure because I would like to see the plan be accurate to our discussions. And I want to make sure that that's okay to come in after we close the public hearing. And I'm being told by our chair and by our town planner that it's okay. So then I am okay to go to vote on closing the public hearing.
Any further discussion? Then we will roll, go to a roll call. Kathleen O'Donnell.
Yes.
Cheryl Tagayas.
Yes.
Denny Swenson.
Yes.
April Anderson. Yes. Okay. Public hearing is closed. Now we need to discuss a decision. We have that list, Tim, that you just, um, had up in the construction management plan that we decided would be better suited as conditions. The one that you are recommending for bullets. If we could just run through that.
I mean, that, that's not nearly everything. That's just, that just happens to be a thing.
We have in writing in front of us. So let's start there.
I mean, this is just a description of, of trees and, and their location.
Yeah, we wanted to have in the conditions in the permit itself, that the agreements respecting the abutters with regards to the trees. We want to have the maintenance of the stone walls along Pleasant Street as a condition of the permit. And also we had made note about, um, you know, the protection of, you know, certain trees and stuff, the oak and all that sort of stuff. So this language is more appropriate in the decision itself as conditions, not included in the management plan.
Right. Um.
Kathleen, what was the third thing that you just mentioned?
The retention and protection of the stone walls on Pleasant Street?
Yeah, the agreements with the abutters, the stone walls, and then there was the third thing.
Um, the protection of the trees, the oak tree and, uh.
And the trees along Pleasant.
And the trees on Pleasant.
Should we also put in as a condition of our permit, the note, the periodic notification of the neighbors and the planning director?
I think so.
You just covered the notes I had from our last meeting.
Um, what else I had on here? Yeah, I think that was, um, the notes I had the last time.
Everything else that I had for notes have been, has been.
Yeah, we were, we had put in, we had put in something about, you know, notice to the abutters before any major noise events or an equipment that was supposed to be used to mitigate the impact on the neighbors. But if you've already got that in the construction plan, that is not.
I, I, I mean, I, I, I think, you know, so there's, there's deliberations going on and, and I think deliberations over the decision can, can, what we'll have to do that in open session next time as well. So I think, um, if, if people feel comfortable sort of going back and referring to their notes, um, you know, we'll have a decision, a draft decision that'll be up and, and available to folks, um, for the next meeting. We'll put that on the agenda and take some time to sort of go through that. Cause I know that there are things that I have in my notes that I, I just want to make sure that we're, um, we're addressed, but I, I don't have them at my fingertips right now.
Yeah, that's all I had. That's all I had from the last time on mine. So I don't have.
That's what I had as well. So I want to be able to make a decision, Tim, though, and. That's what I had as well. So I want to be able to make a decision, Tim, though, and mention what we believe our conditions will be.
Yeah, no, but April, what I'm saying is like there there'll there'll be a written decision.
I understand.
That that so if there's
I don't want to deliver the conditions again at our next meeting. I want to discuss what those should be now.
Okay.
When you write it up, we might have comments, whether or not it's sufficiently addressing the conditions the way we had hoped. But I think in order to make a decision, we tonight, we need to say what our conditions of the permit will be. Unless anybody disagrees. I mean, that's how we've always done it.
April, if I may, I I think we talked a lot about moving things out of, I spent a lot of time talking about the uh changes in the construction management plan. I I think it I'm ha- I'm okay with seeing a draft before our next meeting. If if we have it a week in advance and we can just use the meeting. If even if we get it a week in advance and we see that something's missing from our notes, we can individually send Tim an email. And um I I just think it would be easier to have something in front of us. So that's my two cents on it.
So are you proposing we do not vote tonight?
Well, I April, I mean, we we you've ve- you've already voted to approve the definitive subdivision?
No, we didn't.
No, we closed the public hearing.
Oh, that's right. Uh yeah, no, I'm sorry. I've been I've been acting like you already did that.
So we could we could we could approve it and subject to review the final written decision.
Yeah.
Want to make that motion?
April, I'm sorry. I was being a little testy with you. Because I thought
Being testy right back at you, because I'm exhausted. And I feel as though we've talked this one to death. Um but I don't know that we're gonna get much further, so I like what Cheryl's just suggested.
So do I, because it's my Zoom call of the day, so yeah.
I would like to um have somebody please make that motion.
So moved.
So the motion is to approve definitive subdivision two-two-seven Pleasant Street. Pending review of the written, review and approval of the written permit.
Excuse me, may I add uh and um accompanying documents, just the plans, however you want to reference those.
We have a second?
Second.
Second.
Can't move and second it, Danny.
Any discussion? No, then let's
Can can I can I can I just again clarify who made the motion and who seconded?
No. Danny made the motion and I seconded it.
Thank you.
Okay. The motion is, just for the applicant's knowledge, I see him raising his hands, we are voting to approve your project. We are then gonna have the decision drafted, and we are gonna review it amongst ourselves. And I don't expect that we actually need any further votes at any further meeting. Unless something is wrong, but it shouldn't be. So just so you're aware, this will be your approval, and then we'll get you a written permit shortly. Okay. Let's do a roll call vote. Danny Swenson.
Yes.
Cheryl Tagayas.
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell.
Yes.
April Anderson, yes. With this, um we are going to move the discussion of the housing production plan to a future meeting. Rightfully, um but I don't think, I think it's very late, and we should probably stop this meeting now.
Uh April, may I just um make a comment um to the app applicant for two-two-seven? Um, thank you for uh your patience and for working through the details. My experience with over five years as on this board has led me to be become more detailed with every meeting and with every permit because I see the importance of it. And so thank you uh for working through it with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And thank you to the
I can appreciate, I can appreciate quickly, just just going back up this meeting that seems like yesterday, but um you know, the the hearing the citizens and everybody speak about developers and what's going on in this town. I'm from this town. I grew up here. I feel what you're going through in regards to the forty B and everything, and I think there's a better process to be had in engaging someone like myself who's a developer who's trying to propose single-family homes, because that's what I'd rather see in this town. Um so I'm willing to engage with you guys, and the more uh dialogue we can have, and if there's anything I can do to help um to to refine this process and maybe this is, you know, uh things that the citizens are speaking out against so much. So that is just my two cents.
Well, thank you. We'll probably take you up on that. Okay, um and I I just want to thank you for hanging in with us. I know there's been some late nights, and you've had some very thoughtful comments, and um it has been a pleasure working with you, so thank you very much um for engaging. Now with that, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn for the evening.
So moved.
Can can we can we do three thirty-three Brush Hill Road?
Yes, sir.
Good night, everybody.
Yes, we can. Good night, good night.
Um I forgot, we need to do three thirty-three Brush Hill Road, so please. Take it away.
Um, so
Did they vote?
Three thirty-three Brush Hill Road. Um we um we've had a number of of sidewalks. One of them uh was last Friday, uh was a publicly advertised sidewalk to accompany the landscape architect from BSC Group um as he did his final um verification of the planting plan um for three thirty-three Brush Hill Road. Um, I I I disseminated a number of documents. Um I'm gonna bring them up in order. Um, the first, and I I I think most important, um is the, and now I'm already, okay. Um, is a letter from Dave Crispin from BSC Group, who um is the um the the chosen consultant to um to review the stormwater management plan for the three thirty-three Brush Hill Road project. Um there was a a series of back and forth legal actions uh between multiple parties that uh led to a settlement agreement that outlined a procedure by which um the town would contract with an outside consultant to verify the efficacy of the stormwater management plan and the completion of the the planting plan. Um at which point uh the developer um or the proponent um uh uh Brush Hill Mansions Group um would be able to receive occupancy permits for the three homes that they had built um per the site plan approval that was issued by the planning board. So um document number one is this letter from October sixth from Dave Crispin, um which uh in which he writes, BSC now finds that the site to be stable with acceptable vegetated cover and based on site observations and the design engineer certifications that the storm drainage system to be constructed to operate in a manner protective of stormwater interests. Um, I talked to Dave this afternoon to verify that this letter constitutes his satisfactory approval of the um stormwater management system. Um it does. Uh, the one remaining concern uh that he outlines is the uh invasive species plan, which was subsequently provided by the proponent. Um, Dave also verified to me over the phone that um that was what he was looking for. Um, so to to that effect, th- this is this is it for the stormwater system. Um, the other documents that I sent were the as-built plan and the um the final engineering report from um the proponent's engineer, which is kind of what Dave is referencing um when he talks about um uh when he says um the design engineer certifications. Um that's that's what he's kind of leaning on. So we're all set on the stormwater system. Dave references in his memo, a separate letter is being issued by BSC's landscape architect regarding tree plantings um that should be replaced or cared for under the understood warranty. So um there is the landscape report that I'm bringing up. Um and so this is the result of our sidewalk uh last Friday. Um, so again, um you know, the relevant passage, you know, being um BSC finds that the site to be stable with an acceptable establishment of a majority of buffer plantings to achieve visual and ecological interests. The quantity of trees within the node of buffer planting exceed those required on the approved plan. It is BSC's opinion that while the understood warranty replacements remain to be addressed, that the plantings on site are substantially complete per the design intent of the landscape plans with the following exceptions, as shown on the attached plan. So there are eight trees and three shrubs that are dead um that need to be replaced. Um, there are fourteen trees that have some type of um stress or decay or or something that um warrants special attention uh to ensure their survival. Um and those are outlined, you know, here and and are labeled on a plan that that is also in the folder. Um, the landscape architect also noted other minor items that are outside of the scope. Well, not outside of the scope of the landscape plan, but are kind of more, these are not make or break items. These are things that, you know, should be addressed and should be brought to the attention of the developer and the um the condo association. And then um just for for our record, um which I think everyone appreciates, there were a number of um substitutions and replacements um from the um from the site plan that were um approved, but also, you know, it's just good to have them in one place so that we know which ones um, you know, were were there um and which ones um were on the site plan. So um the final the final note here, subject to understood warranty and maintenance level corrections to be performed as noted above, BSC believes the project is substantially complete. Now, this bit about the um warranty and maintenance level corrections is something that, um having not been here for the amended site plan and settlement agreement um affair, I I I need to get some some clarity on what that meant. Um, you all may have a better understanding than me, but I think I've gotten it. Um, you know, in conversation with town council and with the proponent's attorney. Um, the the settlement agreement is pretty clear and limited in its kind of what it's looking for. Um, i- it's looking for, it's looking for this. It's looking for verification from BSC, which is our chosen consultant, that the project is done, um which they have provided. Now, the the concern that I have that I needed to get clarity from from someone, and I and I got that from from both town council um and from the proponent's attorney, um just based on the understanding of what this all means, is that um there is a three-year warranty on the trees that um is laid out in the site plan approval. Um, you all may remember this. Um, the warranty is supposed to be covered in the in the first half, one and a half years by the developer, and the second one and a half years by um the condo association. And, you know, basically, you know, exactly what we're talking about here in the three-year period from the initial plantings, which I believe was September twenty nineteen. Um, if something like this happens, eight trees and three shrubs need to be replaced. Um, someone's on the hook for those. And then the first year and a half, it's the developer, and then the second year and a half, it's um, it's the condo association. S- wha- what the
Warranty to who? Who who has the benefit of the warranty?
Uh
Well, now it's with the condo association.
Well, it's It's we're we're still in the developer's year and a half, um so from from September twenty nineteen to um the 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 warranty is 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 basically just that the trees that are on the plan will be there and alive for three years. Um and then
Here's my, I I wasn't on it when this first guy drafted either, but here's my question. I if I give a warranty, like I'm a builder, and I give a warranty to the buyer that, you know, the plumbing will be fine and the trees will be great and everything will be wonderful for three years. That's a warranty from me to the buyer, that that's what the story is. So I want to know who's the warranty to? Are they warranting to the town? That this is the the situation with the trees? Are they warranting to the new owners that the trees are gonna be there for three years? I'm just, I'm just kind of wondering, how who who do we have a warranty to?
All plantings, I'm reading just directly from the site plan approval, which you may also be looking at. Um, all plantings, including trees and shrubs, shown on the planting plan, shall be warranted and maintained for three years after planting, with the developer warranting and maintaining these plantings for the first one-point-five years after planting, and with the condominium warranting and maintaining these plantings for the second one-point-five years after planting.
Yeah, that's the language you already read, and that's the language I read, but I'm still going, who's the warranty to?
I don't know.
Benefits from the warranty?
It must be the town.
It's confusing. I Kathleen, just for background, so that so the condo association had a lawyer, the developer had a lawyer, and then we had town council. So I guess you Yeah, there's too many lawyers, and I was out there in the trees trying to get it done. So here we are.
And and I had untold phone calls with uh Bill Clark and Kevin Freitag when it was drafted and since it was drafted, so.
Um, all right.
So a- 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 all of a- all of this is to say that um what what the what the Brian is raising his hand. Was he around for this? Does he have insight?
There is Brian.
I don't even know why I'm still here.
Do I?
I kind of felt bad that I messed up your meeting, so I came back. Uh, so I think Kathleen, that the warranty ran to the town that that one of these two agents would put the trees back. If you remember, the rest of the board may remember, this was a giant mess. Um, and there were lawyers everywhere, and there was a substantial tree clearing that was not supposed to happen. So the board took the position that the trees had to be put back. And we wanted, the 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 condo association wanted the trees, but the neighbors around the property also wanted the trees, because the trees are an important part of maintaining the water, keeping the water on the property, and they wanted to mitigate the water runoff. So the the warranty really is likely running to the town to make sure that the town doesn't have further exposure from water pouring off the site and eroding people's basements down on Truman Parkway.
Wow, okay.
So wha- what I what I what I want to make clear is um the 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 contention that the proponent's um attorney is making and whi- which town council agrees with, and I and I I think I agree with um just regarding wha- what are the terms of the settlement agreement and what are the terms of the site plan approval, um which which are connected but different things. Um, and wha- what the wha- 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 what the what the contention is, is that the trees are there. The trees have been planted. BSC has verified that all the plantings are there. Um, which is what the settlement agreement compels the town to to, you know, have a consultant confirm that, um which they have. Um, part of that confirmation is that some of these trees are are damaged or dead and need to be replaced. The replacement of those trees is not something that the settlement agreement, which is what is holding up the occupancy permits. The the replacement of those trees is not a part of the settlement agreement. It's a part of the site plan approval. So town council, the developers' council, um both agree that um the building commissioner should be releasing these occupancy permits. And if there's an issue with the replacement of the trees, because the warranty is in place, the site plan approval dictates that these trees need to be there. Um, the enforcement and recourse mechanism is the same as through any site plan approval. Um, if the trees are not replaced, either there could be an action by the building commissioner um in terms of fines, in terms of not being in compliance, or there could be action uh by the planning board um to rescind the site plan approval if there's not compliance. Um, but I think that I just wanted to be prepared with as much information as possible to convey to you that um th- there 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 is outstanding issue with replacing these trees that needs to be handled through the site plan approval, not through the settlement agreement process, which should be over after we've received these two reports, which is what the settlement agreement requires, is the reports from the third-party consultant to confirm that the the project is done, um you know, based on what they were asked to look at. Now, one thing that I will say is that um there are just a couple outstanding invoices that BSC needs to um send out um just for the time that it took to do the recent sidewalks. So I I would I would recommend that um So I, I would, I would recommend that, um, you know, pending satisfactory payment of those invoices that um, those occupancy permits get released by, um, by the building commissioner.
Are we holding money on a bond for that?
On a bond for what?
Um, we don't have a bond.
Isn't a bond?
No, the developer is paying BSC directly.
Oh, okay. Alright then, yeah, I mean, I think that I, I, I read the settlement agreement. I read the letters. I read the special permit and I did do the sidewalk. I think these guys are dreaming about Japanese knotweed because it's in the basement foundation of one of the buildings, but I think somebody buying that for whatever the ridiculous price they're asking for is going to notice that when they do their inspection. Um, but um, but I don't see any reason to hold up the certificates of occupancy based on this information.
Yeah, that's the only thing I would say is that I just want to make sure we're whatever our motion is, isn't to Joe Prandak to issue an occupancy permit. It's that we no longer have concerns with the issues that we were concerned about. Because I don't know if there's other things that he might be concerned about somewhere else in the permit that weren't related to stormwater or trees.
Yeah, I don't know that we're the only things holding up the, yeah.
Exactly. So do we just have to be careful about how we word the motion? Um, but otherwise, I'm prepared to make that vote. Cheryl and Denny, are you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Kathleen, do you want to get a shot at making the motion?
So I guess I would move that we would approve this, the building inspector's issuance of certificates of occupancy, subject to payment of outstanding invoices to BS, BSC. And, you know, subject to building inspector's certification that the other, you know, conditions for the issuance of the occupancy permit have been met. Does that sound right?
Sounds great.
I just have a question. Um, do we need to reference um that we're relying on these reports? Kathleen?
It's in our minutes. I suppose. I mean, I could amend the, just say, you know, based upon the reports we've received from our consulting.
Um, yeah, I, 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 I think that would be better.
That based upon the reports of our, uh, received from our consulting engineer, BSC, the planning board votes to authorize, to authorize the building inspector to issue certificates of occupancy?
Do you want to say recommend that the building
Yeah, okay, sure. Recommends the building inspector issue certificates of occupancy, subject to payment of outstanding invoices to BSC. And subject to whatever provisions the building inspector, um, you know, needs to be satisfied with.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to say, so we, we actually have like very little leverage to get this done, but I, but legally we have to do this, so. I um, this, this is why the um tree bylaw discussion is very important. So, thank you. I
And I just want to say before we do our final vote, that Brian's still on here. The amount of time that this board spent, Denny was a part of it too, in addressing this problem. Um, to see it come to this conclusion finally is, is rewarding.
That's one way of looking at it. So, yeah.
Well, it's rewarding that it's done, Denny, because we, there were times when we didn't know if it would get done, is my
That's true. That's true. No, you know, that, you're right. We, we've all been through a long hard journey and um I, I'm just discouraged that there's still eight trees that are dying or dead and all these, but we'll get there, one way or another. And, and, and the site does look a thousand times better than it's ever looked. Um, so.
It's just sad when you realize what used to be there.
Oh, I know, I know. Don't even get me started on that, but
Yeah.
But at least it's not in shambles. It was in a really, really rough state earlier, so. Um, and there's a real nice diversity of, of trees and, and, and landscape there. So I think in the long run, I think the condo committee will take over and it will be beautiful. I think, I think there will be a happy ending here.
And the abutters water issues have been resolved.
Finally, finally, yes.
Okay, then let's go ahead and take this vote. Um, Cheryl Tagayas?
Yes.
Denny Swenson?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
April Anderson, yes. Okay, now with that, we are going to postpone the discussion of the housing production plan to another meeting.
I just want to assure Brian, who's stuck around, that uh we're going to implement it.
Okay, um, can I have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Oh.
Second? Okay, um, any discussion? No? Um, roll call vote, Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Denny Swenson?
Yes.
Cheryl Tagayas?
Yes.
April Anderson, yes. Thank you all. See you in 29.